We'll cause the November fifteenth city council meeting to order. We need to go right into the shade. Cliff, you want to go ahead and reconvene the shade meeting? And then we'll go into the regular council meeting, please.
Mayor and council, as you know, we just, the last few minutes, left a shade meeting regarding a piece of litigation, Southwick versus Apopka. And based on the discussions and information you gathered regarding settlement, potential settlement and/or strategy decisions related to litigation expenditures, which is the narrow exception which we were under, now would be the time to provide direction, official direction, to the lawyers who are handling that case, Mr. Noah and his associate. And so if you want to have your discussions now and provide that direction, this would be the time. If you choose not to, that's fine, too. But they just need to know what you want to do.
Anybody want to weigh in on what the direction?
So would a motion be appropriate at this time?
It could be a motion. It could just be something where there's a consensus. But remember, you have two cases, and both of them were part of the notice and part of the discussion. One was the HUD enforcement case, yes. And the other one was the private lawsuit by the developer. And so, you know, there was a lot of questions and so forth, went back and forth. And if y'all can call us around a decision to render to the lawyers so they know what to do on your behalf on both of those matters, that would be great. And if you just need more information, provide that feedback and they will get the information.
I would like to see the outside counsel to speak with the claimant in reference to settlement negotiations, in reference to the lawsuit, and then to get clarification on the HUD case.
Okay. Is that in the form of a motion?
I so move.
Okay.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Okay, I'm sorry. To go to the plaintiff?
To discuss the possibility of resolution in the private lawsuit.
Okay, the private lawsuit. And then what was the other one?
To get clarification of the potential conciliation agreement with the Housing and Urban Development, HUD.
Okay, so those were the two.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
And I will second.
Got a second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Go forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Imocation pledge and fact of the day, Commissioner Smith.
Let us assume the attitude of prayer. Most gracious and honorable God, our Father, we thank you once again for this opportunity to come and be servants of this city. We thank you, God, for our residence. We ask you to continue blessing your guidance upon this council, that you will lead, guide, and direct us in which you have us to go, that all that we share do be pleasing and acceptable in your sight, in thy son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day, on November fourteenth, nineteen sixty-nine, Apollo twelve, the second manned mission to the surface of the moon, is launched from Cape Canaveral, Florida, with astronauts Charles Corrad Jr., Richard F. Gordon Jr., and Alan L. Bean aboard. President Richard Nixon viewed the liftoff from pad eight at Cape Canaveral. He was the first president to attend the liftoff of a manned space capsule. Fact of the day.
All right. Got the minutes from the eleven-one council meeting? Need a motion to approve?
I actually need to make one adjustment. I sent this over to our city clerk earlier this week as well. Just adding a little more verbiage to my council report. I don't know if that was circulated to the rest of the council or not. Mrs. Parks did that.
Yes.
Okay. So that's updated correctly and all that?
It should be on the agenda as it was replaced.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. So a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Agenda review? Anything, Cliff? Are we?
I don't have any questions. Well, yes. When we get to the attorney report, I just want to do it sooner. I will have a walk.
We need your, is your mic on?
It is now.
It is now. When we get to the attorney report, or sooner, at your pleasure, I will have a walk on the item regarding a security agreement regarding the crossroads at Kelly Park. You can put it wherever you want on the agenda, or I can wait till my report. That's up to you guys. The developer is here to address it when the time comes.
Okay, we'll just do it under the attorney's report. Okay. All right. Presentation, Main Street Apopka, Jim Hitt.
Good evening. Jim Hitt, Community Development Director. I'm doing, going to do just a brief introduction regarding the Florida Main Street program. This is a program that started back in nineteen eighty-five. This is before I got here. So it is a, it's a four-point program. I'm going to let Caitlin Kosheta follow up on that portion. But basically, it's a national program. In Florida, it is, it's administered by the Division of Historical Resources under the Florida Department of State. But it is a grassroots program. It involves people from the community to make your downtown better. I do have a real brief handout that kind of summarized, summarizes the program itself. But the PowerPoint that Caitlin will be presenting has the majority of the details along with her. So with that.
Well, good evening, mayor and commissioners. It's great to see you. Thank you so much for giving me the time to present our program, Main Street Apopka. So my name is Caitlin Kosheta, and tonight I come to you as the Executive Director of Main Street Apopka. Unfortunately, my team could not be here tonight, but I know they're all here in spirit as we are very excited to formally present this program to you and the city of Apopka. All the credited Main Street programs are guided by Main Street America, which has been helping to revitalize older and historic commercial districts for over forty years. It's made up of forty-six coordinating programs and has transformed over two thousand communities nationwide, with some local examples being Orlando's Milk District, Mills Fifty, the Soto District, and Sanford Main Street, just to name a few. Their undeniable success in rejuvenating, energizing, and strengthening their cities has been the inspiration model for Main Street Apopka, and we are passionate in our quest to do the same for our city. During this presentation, you will become familiar with our board and purpose, learn CRA history, discover our planned twenty twenty-four initiatives and events, and recognize the need for commitment from the city government. The executive board was developed by the foundational members of Main Street Apopka and is comprised of entrepreneurs, CRA business owners, nonprofit experts, tax professionals, master degree holders, and corporate champions. The Board of Directors is still in the developmental stages and is built with volunteers amongst the community of CRA members, both business owners and residences. Both boards are highly active and have been so since Main Street's inception back in March of this year. So as a five oh one C three nonprofit organization, Main Street Apopka is dedicated to supporting existing and new businesses through revitalization, investment, and collaboration. This is done using the tried and true four-point plan for community transformation handed down by Main Street America. These four points include economic vitality, requiring a diverse economic base, being a catalyst for smart new investments, and cultivating a strong entrepreneurship ecosystem; design, creating an inviting, inclusive atmosphere celebrating historic character and fostering accessible, people-centered public spaces; promotion, marketing the district's defining assets, communicating unique features through storytelling, and supporting the bi-local experience; and finally, organization, building leadership and strong organizational capacity, ensuring broad community engagement, and forging partnerships across sectors. Statistically, this Main Street approach has earned the reputation as one of the most powerful economic revitalization tools in the nation, where for every dollar a participating community spends to support the operations of its Main Street program, twenty-four dollars are reinvested into the community in physical improvements from public and private sources. So in short, this approach has the potential to dramatically transform Apopka's CRA area. So some might be asking, what is the CRA? So the CRA stands for Community Redevelopment Agency. The Apopka CRA was established in nineteen ninety-three and is funded through tax increment financing. The agency's goals are to eliminate blight, reduce crime, provide affordable housing, and revitalize economically distressed areas. It helps guide public and private initiatives, improve the city's physical characteristics, encourage investment, and enhance residents' quality of life. Operating under the CRA Act of nineteen sixty-nine, the agency uses increased property tax revenue to finance public investments within the project area. These financial sources are dedicated to projects outlined in the CRA redevelopment area, and this funding is reserved for projects which reduce blight and stimulate private sector revitalization efforts. The CRA is comprised of five to seven members, including the city council and Orange County Commissioner Moore, who has also recently been brought up to speed with our program. And as you will see, Main Street's purpose, I'm sorry, as you will see, the CRA's purpose aligns tightly with Main Street Apopka, and we look to work side by side with the city and the city CRA to realize these goals, acting as a liaison between business owners, residents, and the city to exploit available resources, beautify the city, and activate our sleeping giant. So now we move to where Apopka's CRA district lies. This map is designated by local government to define boundaries and meet specific needs within those borders. Through an area survey and finding of necessity, governments can establish a CRA district when certain conditions exist, such as substandard or inadequate structures, higher crime rates than surrounding areas, inadequate infrastructure, insufficient roadways, and other. Apopka's CRA district includes as far north as Oak Street and parts of Myrtle Street, as far east as McGee Avenue and Mason Avenue, as far south as Tenth and parts of Eleventh, and as far west as Hawthorne Street. And within this area, we have determined four community cornerstones defining the people, the culture, and the passionate pursuit of the community as a whole, with the first being agriculture, the second being preservation, the third being commitment, and the fourth being growth. Because Apopka is unique, despite its fifty-six, fifty-seven thousand residents, thirty-six square miles, and being the second-largest city in Orange County, when you enter this city, you're greeted with a small-town charm, seeing your neighbors at the grocery store and restaurants, sharing happy hour with your best friend from high school thirty years ago, and going to church with not only your kids but also your grandkids, because nobody really seems to move from Apopka because we love it so much. And as Apopka continues to grow, the charming nature must remain. Understanding these characteristics, we have developed initiatives and events to highlight the very best of these and gently bring Apopka into a modern and trending era. Now, the heart of any city is its downtown. For years, downtown Apopka has been an unnoticed, unrecognizable area where travelers pass but never stop. Main Street Apopka hopes to change that. As the number-one priority during the first year, we will advocate to look to build a more walkable downtown filled with modern restaurants and an active nightlife. To foster organization, our focus will be on providing resources, both financial and educational, to existing businesses through grants and tailored workshops on topics such as social media use, branding, marketing, business strategies, and more. Through organized collaboration, exposing these businesses and helping them shout "We are here" will help make the downtown Apopka a destination instead of a drive-thru, sparking greater economic development and financial security. And as new businesses arrive, it is our mission to support and connect them with grant opportunities, the Chamber of Commerce, and all the city resources available to them as they build, open their doors, and grow. To provide a consistent space for the community to engage with each other, as well as to positively promote Apopka and drive economic vitality, we look to expand the Friday night farmer's market from Propagate Social Houses property onto Fifth Street itself, closing the road from Park Avenue and Halls on Fifth every Friday, for, every Friday night for a weekly farmer's market. In the spring, we will introduce Spring Fling Food and Flora, try saying that five times fast, to Fifth Street, similar to Winter Park's Dinner on the Ave or College Park's Jazz Fest, where the community can gather in the street to enjoy home-cooked meals or food from the surrounding businesses as we celebrate our agricultural roots in a spring-themed evening of florals, music, food, and fun. A movie night series picnic-style will take place in the fall and wintertime to include family-friendly films, date-night dramas, and golden-era movies under the stars. This will also be aimed to take place on Fifth Street. During summertime, the Apopka Dog Mayor will advocate for animal rescues throughout the state as new candidates are chosen and funds are raised for pet rescues through campaigning and voting for the twenty twenty-four Dog Mayor. This year's campaign gained local and national recognition on Fox and Friends News and has already received many offers of sponsorship for next year's events. This positive outlet for the Apopka name has been recognized as a heartwarming, wholesome event which brought people together. And finally, to ring in the new year, we will celebrate with our annual Rock the Block Party, complete with a midnight ball drop, live music, and a champagne toast. Each event is designed to demonstrate the four cornerstones of who we are as a city of Apopka, breathing vibrant new life into the downtown area. Then, we will expand our reach throughout the rest of the CRA district with more outreach and activities to help unlock the economic potential. Exploring the final point of the four-point approach in design, a systematic strategy will be in place to encourage new and existing business owners within the CRA district to update, renovate, and restore their buildings and facades. Consistent use of color visuals, of color visual cohesion across our community, and leverage emotional resonance with the brand Apopka. This hand-selected color palette for downtown consists of a dark blue-gray, sand, moccasin, vintage white, and dust, and represents Apopka's agricultural roots and grounding belief system. Additionally, Main Street Apopka will endeavor to execute one major art project every year, and pictured as an example of an art project where a local artist could be commissioned to design and create a stained-glass statue of a peacock to sit in one of the entrances to the West Orange Trail once it's freshly renovated. And peacocks have been known to wander through the CRA area and have become a welcome sign of exotic beauty and regal strength. Other art projects may include multicolored metal ferns, larger-than-life murals, which they have already popped up everywhere, and we love it, art installations, collages, abstract sculptures, and more. Now, the final piece of our Main Street puzzle is gaining intentional financial commitment from the city, which may be a decision that could be made tonight. Main Street America determines program accreditation through a rigorous, year-long application process. Having begun this application in May and working together with our local Main Street America representative, she has reassured us that we are on the path to accreditation in spring of twenty twenty-four, pending this final step is met with success. Accreditation is important to any Main Street program as it represents commitment, provides the city and program national recognition from Main Street America, and opens the door for MSA grant opportunities as well as federal grant funding. The minimum amount Main Street America will recognize as financial commitment from a city government is fifty thousand dollars. Our projected twenty twenty-four budget lands our total revenue at one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and with the city's commitment of fifty thousand dollars, we have a projected two hundred and five thousand dollars to execute this program with efficiency and excellence. Now, being taxpayers ourselves and caring greatly for the financial health of our town, the Main Street team took a dive into the city's twenty twenty-two budget to ensure Apopka had the resources to commit to a program like this. And as of September thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, the unassigned fund balance in the general fund totaled twenty-four million nine hundred sixty thousand two hundred and seven dollars. So why the general fund and not the CRA fund? We have an understanding that a program like this, being promotional in nature, cannot be funded through the CRA fund but must come from the general fund. So we humbly ask that an amendment be made to the twenty twenty-three budget to include the fifty thousand dollar commitment to our program and for it to be executed as quickly as possible, and for future financial commitment for consecutive years to be considered during budget planning season. So from the entire Main Street Apopka team, thank you so much for giving us your time tonight and previous time in other meetings that we've had. Thank you to the public for listening to the presentation and supporting us leading up to this. I would be happy to answer any questions you all might have. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Caitlin?
Was the fifty thousand dollar commitment discussed with anyone in the city already?
Yes, I discussed it with each of the commissioners. I wanted to talk to you about it as well, but we were, you know, never able to connect.
Right, because I showed up on a date that it wasn't the meeting, and then the date of the meeting completely forgot about me.
Yes.
So I apologize.
That's okay.
So you did talk to each of the commissioners?
Yes, ma'am.
And they, what was the consensus?
Well, as far as I was aware, they were all in a lot of support of the program. They think it will benefit the city of Apopka, and so they were all okay with it.
Yeah. Well, you know, I was, I was very much a part of partnering with the murals, which, you know, it just brightened up that whole area.
It really did.
And at the same time, I remember you had some events going, and it was just so great to see so many in the community. Absolutely. I mean, you know, that's been one of the things that our residents have been asking us, you know, where's our city downtown and how can we get it started? And you absolutely, between Ms. Eller and yourself and Propagate and, and, you know, my friends at the barber shop.
Yes.
You guys have just brought so many different events just among each other, have made the community come out to it. So, yeah, I'm in support of it.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I mean, we met sometime in October.
About a month ago, I think.
But yeah, I mean, a program like this, it's got the luxury of having a national brand associated to it, so it's, you're not starting from scratch in terms of what you're trying to accomplish. You kind of have a blueprint of sorts from a national organization. Having that structure gives you more kind of teeth, if you will, when seeking out grant programs and stuff like that. It's always good to have, you know, kind of your guiding principles, which you gave us kind of that presentation book that we have. It's a little slightly different than this, but point being is that you've kind of categorized where you want to put your focus, which makes total sense. And then, of course, you know, it's a concert effect of how you go about bringing vibrancy and things throughout the city. Obviously, this is focused on one niche, kind of part of our city, right? You've got other entities within the city that are looking at business development, success, networking, like the Chamber, that sort of stuff. The city, if we can ever get our act together and get the Economic Development Director position filled, that would be helpful because all of those kind of work together, because they all have different, different mission and visions to you, very specific, and they all kind of work in concert together.
Absolutely, absolutely. They do actually, for the Main Street programs, a part of the application process is gaining letters of support from all of those entities. So, and we do have those letters as of now, obviously not from an economic development director, but the mayor was so kind to support it and write a, you know, write a letter of recommendation or a letter of support, and so was the Chamber. So we are moving on.
Yeah, and I want to be mindful of other entities that have stood where you're standing. And so, one of the things I would hope to have, I mean, it's kind of hard to kind of say, hey, let's commit this tonight, because I would hope that staff would come with a formal appropriations request to say, hey, we're moving fifty thousand from this to that. And then, too, I noticed on your thing that you're still waiting, still pending on the five oh one three C.
For now. It's about a three-to-four-month process, and so we put the application through once we had discussed thoroughly with our representative from Main Street America, you know, making sure that we were on the right path. And so that was submitted, I believe, in July or August, so we're coming up very close to it. Yeah.
But again, I, you know, some people have accused me of being too flip when it comes to talking about dollars in our city, but fifty thousand dollars, to your point, really in the grand scheme of things is a rounding error, and I don't want to be dismissive of people's concern about their tax dollars, which is important. But fifty thousand dollars, even if it's just used to advertise our downtown area, probably wouldn't go very far. But to invest it in something like this where you've got people that are invested in it, skin in the game, because really the fifty K, it goes along with other fundraising that you are, to have a staff position responsible for the success of this program.
Yes, correct.
That's my understanding.
Yes.
So, and again, too, we've had other people from the services and perspective come to the city and ask us for appropriations, but again, my, I put a lot of stock in the fact that this is a well-known national entity that you're kind of piggybacking off of. So I'm supportive of it. I just, you know, for appropriations reasons, I would hope that we get a formal appropriation request from staff in accordance with them working with you. It tells me one thing, that you're on the agenda doing a presentation, so there's got to be some buy-in there. And then, having your five oh one three C to be able to accommodate those funds, I think would be critical.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Well, we had an exciting meeting and very enjoyable, and enjoyable, and I've never had an opportunity to go to a ball drop before, so to have one here in the city of Apopka would be an excellent idea.
Well, Apopka High School, their engineer magnet program, they're the ones building it. So we are very excited. You know, I love, I love the high schoolers and, you know, the kids of our city, and so we're really excited for that, too.
Yes. So I think that our residents have really turned out for the ball dropping. The idea of farmer's market, coming back and being a regular venue here, will also be a benefit to, to our residents as well, and I love the idea of the picnic in the street. So I'm supportive of the project.
Thank you.
Mr. Nesta?
Yeah, thank you, thank you for being here. I want to echo the same sentiments as my commissioners here as well, that obviously this, I do think adds a lot of value, and to go a little bit even further than what Commissioner Becker even stated, what you said in your presentation is something we had discussed, is that for every dollar invested, we're getting twenty-four back basically within the community? And I think that's, that's where this really makes sense, is it's not just fifty thousand dollars going out, it's, we're making a lot more in reinvestment within our community, which I think is huge for us. So I guess, and is there a way you can send that presentation to all of us?
Absolutely, yes.
Please, thank you. I just want to look at those financials you guys sent over as well. And then I guess from here, it's the discussion of how do we get this on the next agenda, or I guess as needed?
I would suggest that we, as soon as they get the five oh one C three, that would be the time to bring it back. And so I think Jim could start in working with Caitlin, work on a presentation to staff to bring forward. But I think, and we can start on that now, and as soon as we get that, you know, confirmation that you have a five oh one C three, then I think we bring it back to council.
Well, the IRS does allow pending five oh one C threes to operate as if they already have the status, because all you need to acquire your five oh one C three is to be operating within the bounds of your mission. And we have been doing that already, so it's, you know, I don't want to speak for the IRS, but it's basically a guaranteed thing as long as we're not, you know, doing something that doesn't make sense for our mission. They will, they will gladly give any organization. So, you know, we have been already operating as a five oh one C three, so I, you know, from an IRS standpoint, we can certainly accept funds. We already have our bank accounts set up and everything just as it is.
Is tax deductible to the folks that are donating now?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Is it tax deductible now?
Yes, it is.
Even though it's?
Correct.
Okay.
That's how easily it is to get it.
So let's work, if you'll work with Jim Hitt and the team at Community Development, see if we can get it back on council here ASAP.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comments. Okay, public comments. Susan?
Hi, Rod Olson.
Thank you.
Rod Olson, 3156 Rowing Hills Lane, Apopka. As you can see from the overhead, I'll start with that, is the OCPS student generation rates established in September 2020. That's the current program they use at this point. And you can see by the number of units in today, and I think it's 30, 25, that's 100 units, it means somewhere between 30 and 44 students will be coming into the school. Apopka enjoys more portables than most communities in Orange County. Orange County enjoys more portables in the entire state because we're the most rapidly growing county in the state, which means that we operate with portables. Portables are not as safe, they're more expensive to operate and to heat and to cool, and yet we are the target area. The target is not so much OCPS because OCPS has to go to Tallahassee to seek funding. The state indicates, well, you got to be able to fill a school in order to open one. It's, pardon my French, backwards, it's not the way it should operate. Our hospitals grow, our businesses grow based upon future development, there are things that are tied to that, but we need to be looking at it. The fact that, that the, I'll think of it here, Wolf Lake Campus opened in 2006 with 46 portables and none of those portables have disappeared. We had Kelly Park because three of the four commissioners and the mayor went before the school board, we got Kelly Park. Kelly Park will be full by next year and the 12 slots that they had originally put in for portables will probably be filled as well. We've got to do better. Our parents and our children are paying the price for it. Our city, in my opinion, operates, we need to do better. Look at our roads, look at our sidewalks, look at our infrastructure. We're struggling. And again, I've several times, other communities have posted and put a stall on development. We ought to be looking at that as well until we can get our legs underneath us. We always, and one of my favorite quotes is, if you always do what you always done, you always get what you always got. Thank you.
Tomorrow, we were supposed to do an audit of ballots of the last election for mayor. However, today we were informed that we could not photograph envelopes from absentee ballots. We may not physically touch ballots to count them. Bearing in mind, in just a few months, the city will be allowed to destroy these ballots, it appears we will have to take legal advice on how to move forward. These ballots must be preserved until we have the opportunity through legal recourse to resolve the situation. We detailed our request some considerable time ago. Paid for access to ballots, which are open to scrutiny through public record requests. Only to be told at the last minute, the city cannot facilitate our request. I therefore request that the commission motion that these ballots be held in safe custody for an extended period pending our legal challenge. When we are regularly refused public records, we are told they do not exist. Effectively, we are being denied access to competent and substantial evidence to bring before City Hall, which at times is a quasar judicial environment. At these times, it does not matter if it's the mayor, an employee, or a member of the public that lie. There can be repercussions in law for deliberately lying or misleading counsel. As well as changes in the charter, I see a need for procedural changes to make meetings more productive and allow a better access to public who cannot attend directly. We use Zoom meetings continuously now. We could facilitate people who are unable to come through disability or unable to come because of prior commitments to children. At last night's planning meeting, an attorney paid for by the city gave a briefing to commissioners during a meeting open to the public. Yet Chairman Guzler prevented me from asking a question about procedure. Whilst I can accept I may not be entitled to comment again after a public comment has closed, the chair of a meeting should always attempt to answer any questions on procedure that does not involve detail relating to an item on or off the agenda. My tax dollars are paying for the attorney to educate the committee, the commission. Are residents to be excluded from benefiting from that education? Is it the case the dumber we are kept with respect to procedure, the less the city has to worry about asking, us asking awkward questions?
Mr. McKimmy, while you're here, I just want to let you know, I've got made arrangements, I got some, an HR staff member's going to help. Susan, what happened is one of our staff members, her assistant couldn't be here tomorrow after lunch, so we're happy to take you on in the morning. We're set up here for 8 o'clock in the morning, so we'd love to have you here.
Okay, then that could have been directed to us in, it was an hour before tonight that we were told about this. By the time we had canceled tonight, there was nothing we can do about it. In any event, if we cannot physically photograph or handle the ballots to count them, we don't believe that we can effectively do an audit of the last election. We have decided to take legal recourse to find out what we are legally entitled to do.
Well, that's the state law, it's not, that's not the city. Yeah, so it's state law. Okay, next up.
Yes, hey, how are you? I just wanted to make a brief statement on the Main Street Apopka. I think it's a great thing for the city to be able to work with private sector, you know what I mean, to, to bring some, some restaurants and entertainment downtown. You know, I had a business here for a long time, I've been a longtime resident. It's something that a lot of people want, as you mentioned. I mean, the residents here, they really don't want to have to leave Apopka to go to a family dinner or, you know, have a couple drinks or, you know, do things of that nature. And right now, that's, that's the choices we have. You know, we just did a birthday party for my daughter and we had to go outside of Apopka to a good restaurant to have that, you know? And we'd rather have it right here in Apopka where it belongs, you know what I mean? Spending that money right here where it belongs. And I think these people have a great plan and I think they've done great things down here. If you, if you, if you're ever down there, they do wonderful things. And I think they can do a lot for it, you know? I mean, the brewery's done a lot of good things. I mean, they've got that area looking nice, like you said, with the paintings, and I think that that's something y'all ought to consider is working together with privates. They know more about the private than you, you may know. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall, our public comment rules prohibit Florida State apparel to be worn at the lectern.
John Ware, President of Shearox Homer Association. I was very impressed with your presentation as well. I think that's a fantastic idea. I don't have $50,000 to give, but I sure hope that they get it. My stuff seems kind of trivial after these people, but anyway, pretty much everybody here's got a pet at home. Everybody likes dogs, cats, we got them all, birds. But Orange County passed a law saying we can sell turtles, we can sell snakes, we can sell birds, but we can't sell cats, we can't sell dogs. It's illegal unless the city of Apopka opts out. Acoi did opt out. Acoi has a pet store where they can sell dogs and cats and it's legal. But right now, pretty much, if you want to buy a cat or a dog in our neighborhood, you have to go underground. You've got to go to Craigslist or Facebook or something like that. And if you get a bad cat, I did, I paid $3,500 for a cat and it's blind. I went back to the breeder and pretty much told him to kick rocks and was very upset about that. It's a Bengal, if you know what that is. But anyway, they told me to go kick rocks. I've got no recourse. I could sue them, but I got to pay an attorney. And by the time I get through with all of that, there's, I have no recourse. Well, if, we have one pet store in Apopka. I think it's one, we might have two. But anyway, if I want to go buy a cat or a dog or whatever, I can't buy it here, I got to go to Acoi. The, there's no cost to the city for this. I mean, they've had songs since the 30s, 40s, how much is that doggie in the window? What we got, none in the windows here in Apopka, and I'd like to see that change.
All right, thank you. We'll have our attorney at least get more information from a legal perspective.
All right. Yeah, and there's another thing, I mean, I understand, you know, the rescue dogs and everything. I have a rescue dog and a blind cat.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't come up here in front of y'all every, each time with a piece of paper, reading off to tell you what I'm doing. I talk to you from my heart. Tonight, I want to talk about, well, firstly, we get this out of way, I want to say, we lost a good friend of mine that lived in the city. His family is, was very big in the citrus industry and the foliage industry. Bo Pittman passed away a week ago. His family was, with generations here, very good family, well-respected, and he will surely be missed. I want to talk to you about accountability. Accountability is not a new word, it just started out with the death of Austin Duran. If you go back in the beginning of time, God speaks of accountability. As a pastor, you should know, Mr. Smith, he said that children are forgiven until they reach the age of accountability. In God's Word there, he's pretty much saying that all mankind is responsible and accountable for their actions. The federal government even recognizes this in our Constitution. An elected official is responsible and accountable for his actions. An elected official appoints, this isn't the federal government saying this, not Ace Woodham, when an elected official appoints a staff member to a department, he is taking obligation to say that guy or female is eligible to run that department legally obligated, that they will do the best thing for the interest of the citizens of this community. Mayor Nelson has neglect in doing so. He appointed a man that was not prepared, not prepared to run the fire department. He ran the department that caused in a direct death of a firefighter that was, should have never, ever happened. Mayor Nelson didn't have the qualifications, he still doesn't. He's clueless about putting someone to represent the fire department. We're talking people's life. Y'all just hired 30 or 40 something new firefighters. They're kids, young kids. You mean to tell me y'all are comfortable with a man with 85%, above 85% of his department now, does not trust him and y'all are comfortable leaving him there? That is on your hands because y'all are the ones that have the ability to do something about it. Chief McKenna would be responsible, accountable for his action, for his employees. If one of his guys did something, he would have to answer to that. Mayor Nelson, you messed up and you are accountable for what has happened. You need to accept it and I will not stop coming up here until you become a man and agree what I'm saying. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bobby Boy. Good evening, everyone. Okay, thank you. I've got three things, three issues.
Get closer to the mic so we can hear you. Push it up there.
Okay, how's that? Nope.
There you go, there you go.
Okay, breathe on it, okay. All right. I have three hours. Bobby Boy, 2317 Boy Scout Road, Apopka. I had been promised light material when they came and put the water line through by the project manager at that time, and the rock I had in front of my mailbox has not been replaced. They want to put asphalt in it and I do not want asphalt. And the rock I had stabilized for 28 years and now the mail truck is getting where it's wallowed out in the soft sand and I haven't gotten any mail for a couple of days. I think one was Veterans Day, but still, it's just, it's, I'm not a happy camper of that, okay? Michael Ortiz has said they can offer us, offer me asphalt, crumbles, but that's precisely it, it crumbles. My neighbor next door, my renter, they tried, they came and compacted the driveway and right away I kicked at some of it because it looked like it was a low, I don't think there was quite enough asphalt in one spot. And so they went ahead and he said, well, oh, he kicked it over here and it crumbled there, too. He says, we'll fix it later if you need it, but it crumbles. Frank's got a big hole where he, you know, you come up to pause to go out into the road and the tires catch a little bit, it digs out and got the little hill here and then the hole and it's, it's just getting worse and he's now complaining about it. I don't want asphalt, I want rock back. Okay, I don't think it was sufficiently compacted anyway. And this evening, I've mentioned before about that on Boy Scout Road and lighting, they lit up with the streetlights in the nice straight part and at the point of curvature for that curve by the retention pond, the one that two cars have gone through the iron fence into the pond now, and they've had to replace the fence twice. It's not lit, it's dark and with the rain tonight, it sort of was a total blackout. And even I knew where the curve was, but it was still, had to really concentrate on where it was. I thought ambient lighting from the back streetlights, the back lights that were put in in Breckenridge up here would sort of let you see it, but you can't. I talked to Mo about that several times, about putting up the little signs that had just the arrows on them indicating there's a curve somewhere. And right now, they have put up some of the reflective barrels around it, but it's still, we need some light right there or signs or something.
Okay, where, where exactly?
On Boy Scout Road, it's just about 50 foot, 50 to 100 foot west of the entrance to Breckenridge on the north side of Boy Scout.
Okay.
And two cars have gone through the retention pond, through the gate fence and into the retention pond. I'm sure those owners were not very happy. I think it's going to be a problem either way because I think the other way, when it comes and hits that embankment there, it's going to take out the hydrant. But it's funny that we haven't had any problems going the other way. Anyway, so I'm asking for some signage or something along there, lights along that curve. And what Mo told me when I mentioned this, he says, it's not required, it's sodded. And sod does not glow in the dark, I'm sorry, it's just, just dark.
So you need sod where now?
He said the, the parkway between the sidewalk and the asphalt was sodded.
Okay.
And it's, it's, it just doesn't show up. I don't care if it's sod or not, sod does not glow in the dark to indicate there's a curve there.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and, okay, all right, that and my rock. Thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Hi, guys. Hi, everyone. Louis Rivera here of Downtown Barbers and also.
Louis Rivera here of Downtown Barber's and also curator of the Apopka Murals. Couple of months ago, we actually just finishing up the next part of the murals. And I'm actually here actually more to support the Main Street and what they're talking about, because I think that's the vision that we've been having for quite some time. That's why we're creating some sort of downtown art walk. With that and with the proper permits, we're actually creating an art market once a month, starting in January, in our private back, private parking lot. So I think that, including with what they're doing, is definitely a potential of bringing a lot more people to the downtown area. And we're not asking for anything from you guys, but yeah, we're asking for you to give it to them so they can, you know, organize what we've actually all been dreaming about. You know what I'm saying? So I think that's really about everything that I have to say. We'll be back soon, though.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Hello. I am not part of the Main Street team, but I am a fan. I live in Orlando, I live about a mile up from the Mills District. I moved there 12 years ago. When I first moved there, it was silent, like the Mills District was quiet, it was dark. There was maybe people rushing to a concert or a dive bar. And then they rushed back to their car. That was all I saw. In 2023, Mills is lit up, Mills has people walking, their dogs, their couples, the light reflects off everyone's faces. We have new diners, we have taco-specific restaurants and a gastropub. We were actually voted the 12th best tacos in the USA. And if you don't think that's a special feat, then I would like to tell you that 12 years ago, we didn't have any tacos. Thank you.
Leroy Bell, 2308 Blue Meadows Court. I want to start last week. You guys know Newton Bell, the guy with the cowboy hat with the tow truck, my brother? He was in a real bad accident out on Hawassee and Apopka Boulevard. And I would just like to thank the working men of the fire department that came out and assisted him. I thought I mentioned that. Second, I want to mention about the ballots that McKinley were talking about. No, no one can just walk off the streets and walk in and put their hand on ballots. But the AA Tripple C Apopka Area Concerned Citizen Coalition, my organization, couldn't put their hands on the ballot because we're registered with the supervisor of election. So I will be a part of that with McKinley. So before you shake your head and say it's a state law, you're right, but not to us. Second, on the Apopka Main Street, you know, we, we want the city to grow. We want the city to look nice, we want to have retail and everything come in. But on the presentation, well, a beautiful presentation. In one part, it was about the bliteness. On the bliteness side, on one of the four-point chromes, it said volunteer and resource. What do that mean? When the map showed from 4th Street back down to 10th Street, everything seemed to be coming this way, downtown. And at the beginning of the presentation, the money that go into the CRA is money set aside from the taxpayers. So some of the resources need to go that way from 4th to 10th Street, other than just putting up palm trees. So it was also stated that you could use the money that come out of the regular budget. That until the CRA hit. When that hit, then I imagine that money will go back into. So if you remember a few meetings ago, we spoke about the farm equipment that was sold, that was supposed to be used for the education of the farm workers once they shut the muck down. The money came to the city, the city put it in the bank. Then the entries off the money, the city used it what it wanted to use it for. Then they was in compliance. So by using out of the general fund, is that's just a way to use the CRA money instead of for using for the bliteness?
Anybody else? Good, okay, all right. All right, we've got three items on consent. Anybody need to pull any of those? If not, look for motion to approve the three consent agenda items.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Aquura Estates Platte. Jean? Sorry, that was Smith and Nesta.
Good evening, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve the Aquura Estates Platte. The subject property is located at 4448 Chandler Road, west of Jason Dwelly Parkway and north of Appy Lane, approximately 28 acres in size. The Aquura Estates Platte is for consideration of a 76 lot residential subdivision and 11 tracts for landscaping, open space, stormwater and pocket parks. The access points are proposed via Tiger's Drive onto Jason Dwelly Parkway and Silver Break Street on the north of the subdivision. The Platte is consistent with the major development plan approved by City Council on April 6, 2022, and the construction plan approved by the Development Review Committee on February 24, 2023. The DRC recommends approval. At its meeting last night, November 14, 2023, the Planning Commission considered this Platte and unanimously recommended approval. The recommended motion is to approve the Aquura Estates Platte based on the findings in the staff report. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the Aquura Estate Platte.
So is that the one? You know something I just noticed, is that that big open space behind Box Springs Ridge?
Across from it.
Across from it?
Yes.
Oh.
West, west of it.
Okay.
That's a good name.
Aquura?
Yeah. Well, it's the, it's the Native Americans that were one of the first inhabitants of Apopka, so.
Oh.
It's a good name.
Thank you.
So does that mean you're making a motion then to a?
Sure.
I'm sure the applicant will take it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Cindy Edwards, come on forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We're here tonight to request the authorization to sign the Professional Services Agreement with Strengthening Our Sons to provide additional programming. This program will help increase and improve the recreational, cultural and educational opportunities and offerings to City of Apopka residents and visitors. The Park and Recreation Department seeks out partners in programming who are interested in operating high-quality programming at City of Apopka Parks and Recreation Facilities. Staff have identified Strengthening Our Sons as an organization to provide mentoring and tutoring programming at the Billy Dean Center for Teenage Boys. The program serves both boys between the age of nine and 19 years of age and provides a once-a-month mentorship training on leadership, financial responsibility, etiquette, grooming, health and nutrition, civic engagement, and many other life skills. Program sessions are two hours and delivered in both virtual and in-person formats. Registration is required, but the program is offered free for participants. Additional programming information is attached for your review. Staff see this as a great opportunity to partner with a group to bring additional education and life skills to the teenage community while increasing programming at the center. This would also complement the current programming that we offer there for teenage girls, which is our Butterfly Effect Program. The program agreement would expire on December 31 of 2024 and with it being renewed by council approval each year. So without further ado, I would like to introduce the Board Chairman Carl Walker from Strengthening Our Sons, as well as Troy Johnson and Tammy Holt.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Carl Walker. I'm the Board Chair of Strengthening Our Sons, and I'd just like to introduce you to our team.
Troy Johnson, 2296 L.O.A.L.
Troy Johnson is our Vice Chair and also a mentor as well.
Good evening, I'm Tammy Holt.
Tammy Holt is our Director, and she's also the founder of the actual program. So what I'd like to do is, for the sake of time, I'm going to go ahead and get started just to kind of tell you guys a little bit about our program. Strengthen Our Sons is our organization. Typically, what we normally do is we welcome the parents and the mentors and the volunteers that we set up. We introduce all our staff members, our mentors and our volunteers during those sessions. So as Cynthia did, she went into a little bit about our program. And just to kind of really set things up, I'm going to tell you how about our program, how we are different from any of the mentoring programs that you see around town. I do have on here Parents and Guardians, Hire for Counsel. If anyone or anyone from the audience has any information or questions about it, I'll be glad to answer that for you. So just to go ahead and quickly get started, we were founded in 2009. We are a 501(c) nonprofit organization. We serve male youth between the ages of nine and 18. We are a community-based program. And one of the things about us, we focus on both intervention and prevention. Through our intervention services, we provide the mental health counseling, which Tammy Holt here is a licensed mental health counselor. And then for the prevention side, which me and Troy work on as mentors, we operate the Male Youth Leadership Program. So through our intervention services, we help create and reinforce the male youth to participate in the program behaviors for emotional and mental health. Services are by our Florida licensed mental health therapists. We do have a team for the young men should they require that. Also, we do accept insurance. So the intervention portion is the part that makes us really different. Many times when we encounter young men come into the program, and many of our young boys in our class, they are basically just kind of going through, and I'll go through that through the slide, they actually may have a need where they may talk to someone. We have that ability and have that asset to be able to reach out to a mental health counselor. Mental health counseling offers and assists with the following. It improves and strengthens the son's communication and social and interpersonal skills. We build strong bonds with the youth for the parents. We also teach the parents how to communicate and support their sons. You guys will be really surprised that after COVID, mental health has been like the number one thing. Everybody is suffering from some type of mental health illness, from being closed up and cooped up. But we've all experienced a lot of death, a lot of loss. A lot of lives have been turned up, even financially, homelessness. So people are just really dealing with a lot of things. Strengthening Our Sons, again, we really focus on the kids' self-esteem and also greater acceptance. The other thing that Ms. Tammy also, also she fosters, is she helps them learn with better coping skills and help to make healthier decisions. Part of the mental health counseling part, this, again, we focus with a lot of different things on the mental health side that Ms. Tammy works with. ADD, ADHD, anxiety, OCD, depression, PTSD, post-traumatic stress disorders, trauma-related disorders, disruptive behavior disorders and adjustment disorders. These are all things that we hear on a daily basis with our kids that they suffer from. Again, the kids in our program, they're not bad kids. A lot of our kids, they're your AB honor roll students, they're your A students. They're actually our leaders, so we actually focus on that. However, a kid can experience the death of a loved one, like a grandfather, a grandparent. Mom and dad are going through a divorce. You'd be really surprised how kids can start to change. So one of the things about that, Ms. Tammy, she provides that nice element of a licensed health therapist. Onto the next part. What can you expect? All of our sessions on the mental health side that Ms. Tammy involved, they are confidential. They also, there's initial consultation, she has a treatment plan, sessions are about 50 minutes. Again, this is the unique part about our program, how we can actually provide additional assistance for some of the parents. So how do you find? Again, this is an informational packet that we usually provide through those sessions. Again, Ms. Tammy Holt, she's available if you all would like to reach out to her, feel free. This is not a pitch, but I'm just kind of really explaining to you guys how our program works and how it's different. The prevention side services, this is where me and Mr. Troy handle on the mentoring side. One of the things, our goal is to help with the boys to improve their grades, improve behavior, become leaders in school and become leaders in the community. You'd be really surprised that these are all the things that we try to strive and pour into these kids to make sure that they get that direction. Topics we cover, every week, when we have, actually not every week, but every month, there's always a general topic that we cover. It could be about cultural empowerment, identity development, understanding manhood, life skills training, etiquette and grooming, financial responsibility, health, nutrition, relationships, civic engagement, college preparation. We do focus on STEAM, not STEM, but STEAM, that's science, technology, engineering, arts and math. The other part, we also do career development and entrepreneurship, where the boys will actually come up with ideas about how to launch a business, and we assist them in that. So we have like little contests. Our program is curriculum-based. Hurry up here for you guys. It is curriculum-based. The program places an important on health, education and relationships at each stage of life. Again, many of the young men that we encounter, they come through our program that are in middle school, which is a very key point where you want to start to reach a lot of young men, and then we get them through high school. The material that we use is always age-appropriate for the group. The program meets on the first Saturday of each month from 10:00 to 11:30. Typically, we feed the boys, we still have a little chatter up until about 12 o'clock. So it's a good two hours that we do get to spend with the boys. There's no cost to the parents to participate in this program. As long as I've been involved in this program for, since 2011, along with Mr. Troy, we've never had a charge for the parents. All the mentors and volunteers are required to have background checks. That is very important today, and we believe in that. And before working in the program, they also go through mentor training. That's another thing. A lot of people want to be mentors, but they don't really know how. We kind of help assist you with being mentors. So that's something that a lot of mentor programs say they have a problem with trying to attract and find mentors. Session schedules, it's right here. One of the unique things, we do virtual and in-person. When we meet over at the Billy Dean Center on Saturdays, we have young men that are there. We also have young men that probably maybe live a little far, so they also are able to attend virtually online when we do the Zoom session. Parents' role, which is really important. We ask that the parents stay involved. And any concerns about their program, they can always reach out to Ms. Tammy, or they can reach out to me. Hey, my son's been acting out lately, hey, he may need someone to talk to. We have that. Make sure your child is on time. So we make sure that the kids understand that's something that we don't have today. A lot of people just report late. If you're from the old school, you know, to be on time is to be late. So we tell the kids to be early. So that's something that we enforce. Make sure your child participates online. Any parents in discussions in the group meeting, what we try to do is we do a lot of male bonding with the young boys. with the young boys. So we always try to make sure everything is in a safe, safe environment for them so that they're free to communicate with us. And also, we ask parents to acknowledge any change in behaviors. And we also encourage praise. I tell that for any parent, always praise your children when they do something good. The mentees' role, just to kind of go into this really quick. Again, we ask them to arrive on time. They're always respectful of the mentors. They participate and they engage in the youth conversations. And we actually ask them to dress appropriately. We understand that when we're meeting at the center, we don't really want them to wear slides. We want them to wear clothes, shoes. We don't want them bumping their toes or anything if we do any type of activities outside. So we do ask them to dress appropriate. And then we also ask them to learn and memorize a mentee's motto. This has always been our mentees' motto. And to watch the kids from being in middle school as they transition onto high school and when they graduate, this motto is something that they learn and recite by heart. Failure will never overtake me because my determination to succeed is too strong. Many times in life, we have many failures. In order to be successful, you always have to have failures. And this here is something that everybody can kind of internalize and personally apply to themselves, and it can mean something different to them. We actually use a group me application where the boys are able to communicate. Other parts for the parents, we're able to share information. Good things that we like to do is when Apopka has their camp or when you do your summer program, we put that out there and the parents can see, hey, I know I can get my son a summer job, or I know camp, we wise open. So this has been a good platform for us to reduce email and allow the parents to be able to see information real time. Because not everybody, not everybody is on to the Apopka website or see any of the information. But this is really good information. We can share school information, things that we learn about tutoring, things that we learn about grants or special programs. This is our website. If you want to know a little bit more about our organization, strengtheningarsuns.org. You can go there. You can find out, you can register. It's open to anyone. Right now, registration is open, still open up until the end of this month. The reason why is because we have to finalize, because we have to start doing our planning for our trips. We also produce a monthly newsletter. That monthly newsletter provides access to the parents, just a snapshot, to see how successful we are in some of the things that we're doing, some of the programs. We do a lot of things with aviation. The boys just did a trip to Universal, where they went behind the scenes to kind of get experience about being engineer, just to see how things are dealing with the rides and those types of things. So a lot of our conversation is really good. I'll be reaching out to the Apopka Police Department. We do, again, the identity series, where we have law enforcement agents from all over to meet with the boys, not only just here in Orange County, Jacksonville, Miami, everywhere. Police officers, where they're able to talk to the boys, why did you get in law enforcement? Those types of things. So in that show, that is Strengthening Our Sons. That's what you're getting City of Apopka with our program. Any questions?
Any questions?
First, I just want to say thank you for coming and doing the presentation because you were on the agenda at the last council meeting. But I always feel when something's on the consent agenda, the public doesn't get to the information that you are sharing today. The one question is, you say you meet once a month.
Yes.
So how do you support that young man throughout the month so that he continues to come into the program?
Okay, great, good question. Well, when we initially started this program, we were meeting, we were meeting every Saturday. And where we were meeting every Saturday and with our mentors, we are also, I'm a dad. Mr. Troy is a dad. Our kids start getting more active, it became more difficult. So then, as we rotated with the program, we said, let's go twice a month. Well, if we go now to two thousand twenty-three now, if you know how many activities these kids are in now, it's very difficult to get at least two meetings a month because every organization that's in Apopka, they generally meet once a month. Now, what we do to get around that, to meet more with the boys, is on a weekday, the second, third, or the fourth week of the month, we'll have a special guest, and we'll do that like a chop it up session. So we've had, we've had an NBA player, we've had a judge, we've had different guest speakers come and talk to the boys online, and they like that. And they get to actually just kind of like, just as a man, chop it up. And they get to ask them hard questions. You know, how did you get in the NBA? How did you feel? What are some of the problems that you encountered? So they actually get to immerse themselves with an actual person and a guest speaker. So we do meet with them technically twice a month. But again, the boys are engaged and because their schedules are so, they're so busy, once a month works for us.
Yeah, I mean, all I have to see is the names associated to it, right? Mr. Walker and I were former colleagues back in the day. I don't know how many years ago that was.
Yes.
Now I just see you at the football games, you know, serving those delicious cheeseburgers.
I'm a Apopka dad parent, so I work the home concession stand. That's where everybody sees me.
And then Mr. Johnson, I met you through your leadership with the HOA at Silver Oak. So I've seen you in action as well. I haven't met, worked as much with Ms. Holt over here, but you know. Yeah, and so it's, what I look for in these things is structure more so than anything because the worst thing that can happen is that you get, the mentee is excited about a program, and it goes away. And so having that consistency and you're fine tuning, it sounds like schedule and recurrence and stuff like that to make sure that you get as much participation as possible. So it doesn't have to go beyond just your own personal endorsements because I know, I know you both very well. So thank you for all that you do. Been happy to participate too.
Ah, yes, thank you.
All right. Well, of course, you know, yes, I know Troy. Of course, you know, we always need male mentors, and there's always a shortage. And so anytime there's a program that comes about that's going to make a difference in a young man's life, I'm always supportive of it. And I've known Mr. Troy for a while. Think I met Ms. Holt at the Okoye, not the Okoye, at the Clacona Community Center at another event as well as, so I am supportive and you have my full support.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for taking the time to present to us tonight. I think it was very helpful to understand exactly what you guys do, understand your passion as well and the thought process that's gone on to this and as well as your, the history behind the program. So I appreciate that. Yeah, similar to what Commissioner Velazquez mentioned is, you know, the more weeks, the better. But at the same time, I completely understand that getting students involved. I have twin girls that are two and a half, and they already are filling up their Saturdays. I'm like, this is insane. So completely understand that, and I appreciate what you guys are doing. And just to clarify, you guys are already doing this, correct, at the Billy Dean?
Yes, yes, we're already. We're our second year here at the Billy Dean Center. It's been great. Two or three? Yes. Yeah, second year, yeah, second year. Second year here, we're already doing it. It's been great, participation, we enjoy the center. We love it. That's one of the dreams of Ms. Holt, when she found out the program, was to actually bring the program to Apopka. Like I said, we partnered with the city of Orlando, and we had it there. And believe it or not, it was kind of one of those things. We had people trying to get us to come back, and we were like, no, we're in Apopka. We're staying, we're staying in Apopka. We love it. But it's a, it's a wonderful center. We love it. We love the staff. They've been very helpful with us, and they love just the presentation room where we are with the boys. It's great, so.
Excellent. And one thing I just wanted to note too, is one thing you had said that there's not bad kids. They just go through some scenarios that, that change them. And I like that concept, obviously, is that it's, people could look at a child and say, oh, you're a bad kid, and it's that you're not. You're just going through some issues that we can help you get through. So I appreciate the mindset there for sure.
Thank you.
So yeah, definitely supportive about this.
All right.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with Strengthening Our Sons. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, the IW.
Thank you.
All right. IDWTS conversion program. Dio.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Theodore Dardur, Public Service Director. This evening, I will attempt to provide some requested additional information and explanation on the individual distributed wastewater treatment, which is IDWTS conversion cost share amendment number four, which was tabled at the October thirteenth eighteen twenty twenty-three council meeting. At the conclusion of my presentation, I will seek out the council recommendation on how to proceed with the conversion program amendment number four. A recap of the previous presentation on October the eighteenth twenty twenty-three, staff presented an amendment number four to the St. John River Water Management to share cost sharing number thirty-three six six two for the continuation of this individual distributed wastewater treatment system conversion project in the Wakiva Glen neighborhood. What this amendment entails is add one, one point one million to the existing cost sharing to continue this project. This plus the balance from the original grant agreement, which is sixteen thousand two thirty-seven, bring the total to one point one seven eight millions. This was the cost share that St. John is going to give us to continue that program. It extend the completion deadline to March the thirtieth twenty twenty-five. This cost share original and continued intent is to help to cover the cost to install technological advanced nutrient removal unit in the priority focus area of the Wakiva Spring. These units were tested and approved by FDP, and they conform when compared to the traditional septic tank that they significantly reduce the amount of nitrate that reached the groundwater table. They by helping to protect the impaired Wakiva and Rock Spring within the priority focus area and the basin action plan map. In this area here, you can see the Wakiva Spring and the Rock Spring B map area. The outer boundary encompassed the B map area. And the priority area here is, oh, let me get back to this here. The priority area here is halfway through here. This line here through is what we call the priority area. And that area encompassed what you call the Rock Spring and the Wakiva Spring. And those were the two important areas that was impaired, and that's why they were focusing in this area here. The next map here shows basically our service area boundary, which is in green, and the city of the Apopka city limits there. In this city limit versus the service area, what we showed here in the outer boundary is our service area, which is larger than our city limit boundary. But the typical things what I want to mention here, you see the Wakiva Glen there, and you see Deran Lake, Der Lake Run. And the reason I want to point this out just for reference here, the Der Lake Run is within our service area, but is in Orange County, in corporate Orange County. So that entire neighborhood do have septic. So any improvement done in that neighborhood or the replacement of a septic tank in that neighborhood, credit is not given to the city of Apopka. And right now, I'm not sure if Orange County get the credit. But if you replace a septic there by any other system, this nutrient removal, we're not sure right yet who is going to get the credit. But in the Wakiva Glen, when we're using this system here that is described here for this technological system, we are getting some kind of credit that you can see further down in my presentation that I will detail. To recap again on the previous presentation, this program began in two thousand eighteen. The city was granted first a cost sharing agreement, the original cost share agreement. And that well agreement was really under FDAP to protect the outstanding Florida Spring septic tank replacement program. That was the program entitlement. In that case, St. John paid seventy-five percent, and the city of Apopka paid twenty-five percent of the total cost. What we have done to date, we received three hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred, which is a seventy-five percent of the total cost from St. John. And we provide the other twenty-five percent. And that allows us to complete thirty onsite units for the Wakiva Glen neighborhood within the primary focus area. All of this installation was complete, I think, in the late two thousand twenty-two and early two thousand twenty-three. The city was approved for FDAP wastewater operation permit for this unit. And this permit is required based on the type of technology being utilized by onsite system as they are in effect a miniature wastewater treatment plant. The city council will approve this concept departed program back in two thousand nineteen. The project was chosen over the high cost of extending a central sewer system. But several question was raised on the October eighteen presentation, and additional information was requested by the council for their consideration prior to voting for the approval of the continuation of this project. And in the next slide, I just want to address what were those questions and to answer them the best I can. One of the question was who is responsible for this unit? Due to the FDEP permit, the city is the ultimate responsible, well, for the system. Currently, under the master service agreement, Onsite is on contract with us, and they are responsible for all the operation, repair, inspection, reporting and sampling, and all the preventative maintenance of the system. This contract currently expire in two thousand twenty-six, but include two five-year extension. That was not in the agreement. That was something that I really interpret from the agreement. But the agreement did say that we can extend this contract by the term, section, I think, six point one, and I send those information to Commissioner Becker and all of you. And our six point one, it said, we can extend this after it expire from the term of the contract. The term of the contract to my understanding is five years. And subsequent, you can extend it previous five years. The other question was, what is the lifespan of the onsite unit? From what we have reached out to onsite representative, and it meet the industry standard, the basic structure, which is of a concrete, the lifespan for that is thirty to fifty years, which is a box, and in the box have all the instrumentation to make the system work, the pump, the blower, and electronics. Those instrumentation have a seventy-year lifespan. And this really, from what we reach out to Onsite to tell us, but this also is conformant with the industry standard for pumps and various things like that. Now, the list of the repairs performed on the current unit, this was the question that was asked since this program has been in place for about two to two and a half to three years. And these were the list of item that Onsite provide to us during this period of time that they have replaced. And as you can see, they have the total cost over the past two over six thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. And basically, these were the, and the repairs were the new blower, valve, and the nano box, and the AI module. Those were maybe at fault, and they were repaired. But forty-three other minor repair calls were made to various of these units for minor things to be repaired on what they indicated to us, but no major replacement of any of the opportunists in there. The other question was, why are onsite units different from a traditional septic system or the nutrient well removal unit? Well, this unit are a secret batch reactor, a type of wastewater treatment plant in a miniature form. They are required to have FDEP wastewater operation permit. They are required to be operated by a licensed wastewater operator, and they are monitored twenty-four hour a day using a skater system, very similar to the city wastewater treatment. They use a series of pump and blower to biologically treat the wastewater prior to discharge to the drain field. And unlike other nutrient removal system, the air cycle are contained to one chamber with two separate chamber prior to the treatment. And this is a concept of how the unit looks. You know, when it install, you see those three chamber top there and, and the other well opportunists, just to give you a framework of that. The other question, what are the long-term costs of ownership? Currently, the funding source for the master service agreement for the maintenance are funded by the homeowner. The homeowner paid at forty-four dollars and fifty cents per month, which is five hundred and thirty-four dollar per year for this unit. For two thousand twenty-five, that cost would be forty-eight dollars per month, five seventy-six. And the city pay onsite of that forty-four dollars and fifty cents per month, thirty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents per unit per month for the thirty. dollars and twenty-two cents per unit, per month for the thirty unit, which translate to fourteen thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty cents per year. That is among that basically that the homeowner pay for the maintenance of the system. If anything goes wrong with the pump, the replacement, all those things are, are replaced by onsite by their agreement, by their contract. We don't pay for any one of those, um, equipment or opportunists that has been, been, um, by the contract replaced in kind by onsite. Onsite maintenance cost raised five percent, well, according to the contract is raised three percent or the higher of the CPI index. For last year, the CPI was five percent, and that's why you see five percent here. So which mean the, the twenty twenty-four cost instead of thirty-nine point two to be forty-one dollars and eighteen cent per unit. Now, who is responsible if this unit fail? For the traditional septic tank, the homeowner is responsible. For the installed onsite unit, the master agreement cover everything except deliberate but destruction. For without the master service agreement, the city will be responsible for the unit. So the unit itself is on, because of the permit, is under the ownership of the city of a partner. What are the homeowner responsible for? As I said, they're responsible for the maintenance service fee. There are also all the associated electric cost to supply while a unit, which is approximately between three to six dollar per month. And the cost for the new drain field if needed and the continued maintenance of the exchange to drain field is all on the homeowner. The, the benefit of this system is to protect the spring and all the nutrient removal unit or direct connection to the sewer will be, reduce the total nitrogen load at the least springs. What the credit that we have received for the onsite unit, FDP has give us a credit for each one of these, these unit as eight pound per year. And if you install a central sewer, sewer, um, system per lot, the annuals, um, credit is ten point three pound per parcel. Now with that, I have a letter which are, or an email which was sent to us, I think back in May from DEP who give us this credit. And Richard, you have a copy of those letter, which we can pass out to each one of the, of the commissioner here, which show the email that was sent to give us, well, this credit. There's one correction I want to make. I had ten point three here, it should be ten point eight three pound because I, it's a typo there, it's ten point eighteen, ten point three pound here. Now, what is the long-term strategy here? And the question was raised is what is the long-term strategy going, going forward here? And that determination will have to come from the council. But the way I look at it, that the most cost effective was solution to reduce the natural impact on the spring from septic. The option is to continue with the onsite unit or any other advanced type of well of treatment unit or to install a sewer collection system and require, and request and require the system to connect directly to the central sewer system. How much will it cost to convert the central sewer, um, system? That direction well connection cost, the city will have a significant cost contribution for the installation of the expanded central sewer well collection system. And the homeowner as well will have cost contribution and additional monthly bill for the uses and me, and maintenance. As a representative here with this slide, I just want to, to provide a comparison of some numbers. Orange County recently have an established septic to sewer program to convert two hundred nine parcel in twenty neighborhoods closest to the spring. And initially, when that program started, the cost projection to install the central sewer system was sixty thousand dollar per parcel. When we spoke to Orange County, that cost went up to seventy-five thousand dollars per parcel, right? That is a central sewer system, right? The homeowner contribution is ten percent of the total cost, which is around seven thousand, five hundred. But we, we have seen some letter that came out when the originally cost was sixty thousand, that most of those, those homeowner receive a cost for six thousand plus. And, and that cost is spread over ten year at the annual cost between six eighty-four to seven, seven oh nine per year for each, each of the homeowners. So what the, um, the talking point from this slide is, is if you're going to put in a, a central sewer system, let's look at this seventy-five thousand dollars per parcel as, as a boundary condition here, since we know, know that happened of recent. Additionally, um, those people that will be on septic do have to pay a flat fee for the water usage and for the meter system, which runs between nineteen dollars and thirty-three cent to forty. So this slide is only for some representation of cost that I put there because these were the real cost that we got from Orange County. Now, so on recap, pay the onsite system receive eight pound of, of, of credit per unit. The city contribution to this is twenty-five percent, which is four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five at installation, which is a twenty-five percent cost. And the homeowner paid a monthly well maintenance fee and the city handling current lab cost from that money that we receive from them as a maintenance fee, it contribute to pay onsite for the maintenance and, and the remaining pay for some sampling. That's why you see that cost of forty-four, fifty. Now, what you gather from this cost realization is that by using the onsite system, which was approved here, the city contribute four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollar and realize a benefit of eight pound of nitrogen removal credit per unit. The central sewer, sewer system, on the other hand, right, would be, would cost seventy-five thousand dollars per parcel and the benefit is ten point, I think, ten point eight three pounds of nitrogen removal credit per parcel. Ten point three, I said was a mistake, is ten point eight three. So therefore, under the city corn program, we yielding a benefit of, I think that number now will be as close to seventy-five percent because of the ten point eight three of the overall nitrogen removal credit by only contributing five point five well percent of the total sewer conversion cost. That number I just want to give you because that's the real figure number here compared from a, from when you put in a central system to what the benefit we are getting by contributing for four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five, um, dollars per each one of the unit. But the benefit that we are getting is what the watershed is receiving eight pound well per credit versus, um, ten point three pound. And we only spend five point five percent of the total sewer conversion cost. With that, I just want to bring forward recently, our next door neighbor here in Lake County just recently got a million dollar from FDP and they contribute another million dollar themselves, which for two million dollars. And they are fully, they awarded contract to onsite to do exactly the same thing that the city had been doing. And the only thing in this case that they also are paying for the full replacement, the fifty percent cost, right? They do not, the residents are not contributing anything to the replacement of the septic, they are contributing to it. Lake County has a contract right now, where, where, whether it's onsite, which we plan if this, if this program is to continue, is to piggyback on that contract. And in that case, that contract is valid for ten years and it do have two five-year extension, which mean that if we piggyback on that contract and continue with this program, we are good enough for twenty more years to use onsite for the maintenance of this program. Right now, the way that we understood it, that Lake County has already had one hundred and thirty-two of its u- unit under contract and they're planning another two hundred, two hundred to four hundred unit, a state and local fund, what, what allows. So what, if there is any question I can ask, or what we are asking here, the county recommendations or guidance here is to, if you see fit to approve the, the amendment number four to the Saint John cost sharing agreement, and this will add at least one point, one seven, eight, seven thirty, one point, one million to our existing fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four budget fund. We have already in that fund, three hundred and thirty-two thousand and will allow us to proceed to add ninety additional, um, unit in the Wakiva Glen, well, neighborhood. They have approval, um, utilization of the onsite technology under disagreement and the city took total out of pocket for the ninety additional installation and it will be three hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and twelve. So we are already have three hundred and thirty-two already appropriate in our budget. And we will like, if, if, if you will direct us to pursue the option of a piggyback of the Lake County contract with onsite, Zebra ensure on this program we've been placed for another twenty year. So with that, that was our suggested recommendation for the council approval. So with this additional information that we provided to you, um, I'm willing to answer any question that, well, that you may have where this addition in, in, information did not fill in the gaps.
I'm gonna go ahead and kick things off if I can, um, because I, I think I was the most inquisitive the last time that we talked about this thing. So I'm just gonna use a quick analogy upfront because again, I think two slides ago where you talked about the value statement of, you know, the city's only paying four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars to get this benefit. And I don't think the, the environmental benefit is up for debate. I think we all kind of agree that it's, it's good for the B map. I think originally we all, the ones that were around when we first approved this thing, it was always generally a proof of concept to begin with. This feels like we're starting to get to the point where it's potentially going to be mass proliferation of a solution to people with septic within our city to use this program on a go-forward basis, something, so something that we almost operationalize as a city. But, you know, the four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five, if I can use a loose analogy like a car, right? I'd pay twenty thousand dollars for a car and the benefit statement is, hey, I've got a car and I can commute to work and, you know, do the things that come along with having a car. And that's all you look at. It's pretty short sighted because we all know that the total cost of ownership over the life of ownership of that car, you're putting gas in, you're doing oil changes, you're changing tires, you're doing all kinds of car maintenance, that thing to say, yeah, I only paid twenty thousand dollars for it, but over the life of my ownership of that car, it was much, much higher than that. Same thing with this, I think all of my questions, the last meeting centered around the fact of, do we have our ducks in a row of understanding what our liabilities of these things are going to be on a long-term basis? And so my very first question, because I tried to look over the two, the two contracts that you sent, uh, yesterday, one of them, the Lake County one's like a hundred and twenty-five pages, so I didn't get through that whole thing. I tried to prioritize our master service agreement that we have with onsite, but I wasn't very clear, you know, on paper, who owns, who physically owns the onsite system? Because from what I can see and hear and all the language that onsite has around intellectual property and things like that, it almost lends you to believe that even though we put on the presentation that the city is responsible, it almost appears that onsite owns the actual physical unit itself. Is that correct?
Well, to my understanding, the unit belongs to, it's an asset to us, it's the city of a property.
So we, with certainty, we own the system.
The system, right.
Okay. Where, where does it on the contract? Because again, I didn't, like, maybe I'm just looking for a sentence that clearly says it, but where on the contracts that we have signed by the city, does it explicitly state that onsite will be responsible for all repairs on the system and over what period of time?
Yeah, that, that is in the master agreement that I sent to you, right?
Yeah, so with specificity, which, which section is it?
I think it was highlighted. I, I don't know if I have a copy with me here.
Determination was highlighted.
Yeah, but, but I think it was stated in, in somewhere in that contract that they are responsible for the main, the installation and the, and the maintenance.
I printed out that whole contract. Do you know where?
And I can appreciate we're saying that, but I'm just saying the things that were highlighted doesn't.
Where?
So this is the one that's titled master services agreement between the Popka and
I think it's here. Right, if you look at section one point three.
One point three.
One point three.
Okay.
I think it said here, if I recall, from DWTS service order is duly executed by the parties and detail DWT conference for installation, commission and other service to be provided by onsite. So I think somewhere within here though, it do have, if I recall, the, that they are responsible for the installation because of this information that was provided in the file. It, they do have something that I, you can assure that I may not have it here in front of me, but there was a, a document that really stipulate that they are responsible for the main, the installation, the main, what the, what the maintenance of the entire, um, system, the pump, the blowers and everything else. And that's the reason why we are paying the homeowner, we are receiving well, the money from the homeowner association and we are paying them. I understand though, though, well, the commission, this contract when it was written prior, if not in my time, it was a poorly written, um, well, well, contract. That's the reason why if this program is going forward, I would like to piggyback on the Lake County contract, which is more clearly explain all the, all that stuff in detail. In this contract, I feel because when the program was put in place, it, it DEP had tested that, that system, it worked well, it, and they had the fund available and we were the first one, city of Papa, to use it. So this contract would prepare while this contract tried to put in the best, well, they can in the contract. So it still has certain, certain element, you know, that was not clear in this, this contract. But I can assure you this, I see somewhere about the installation, I just can't find it, that, well, tonight here, but it's somewhere within the document that it has for that.
My whole, my whole line of questioning here is simply to that fact. We, we have to understand what the total cost burden on our city as well as the homeowners actually, because it's not like once our master services agreement, uh, term or renewal terms are over, um, we're not going to ask homeowners who are benefiting from this onsite system to not share in that cost burden. From your presentation, if we believe that, the cost is going to go up five percent annually. So if we piggyback off Lake County and get to a twenty-year mark, that's a hundred percent increase in maintenance costs, that's just off of what's on here over that period of time. That's not to say, and that's onsite, that's onsite assuming that they're doing the maintenance per the master services agreement. So for, it's forty dollars now, it goes up a hundred percent, it's eighty-eight dollars, you know, twenty years from now, maybe it's maybe even higher than that.
Right, but my understanding, if we piggyback on the Lake County contract, all the requirement of the Lake County contract, right, is what we, we will be going by, not our master agreement anymore. That piggyback contract, all the conditions of that contract, those are what onsite will have to be abide with in the execution of our stuff.
But I, no, I, I agree. I know what you're, what he's trying to say is that the, the rate's going to go up, but also our wastewater rates have been going up.
Been going up, right.
So I don't know that if we're comparing, want to compare apples to apples, the rate that the, the onsite's going up is probably comparable to the same rate or the rate.
That the homeowner is going to pay to maintain the system.
But point, but the point being is, okay, the business at hand here, staff is not asking, I mean, this isn't predicated on the Lake County because we're, unless we motion it that way. But we're talking somewhere between ten years, which is our current agreement max, um, service timeframe, up to twenty years potentially with Lake County. Pick whichever one that you want, the ten years or twenty years. At some point, the agreement expires. Onsite goes away and the city says, hey, I've got these onsite systems on my homeowner's properties, what do I do now? Do we have the skill set to be able to do the maintenance on those, on those things? You know, we got seven-year lifespans on some of these, uh, the, the blowers, the fans, the electronics, how, what is that going to look like in terms of annual cost that we would have to budget? The replacement, I see that the concrete has a thirty to fifty-year lifespan, but again, this is a newer product and we don't know that for sure, uncertainty yet. You know, who's on the hook for that replacement? So come twenty, the twenty-first year or the eleventh year, and there's, um, a, a structural compromise on one of these units, whose responsibility is that? Is that the homeowner then to say, okay, well, I'm going to assess whether or not I want to pay for a new one of these units or the city's going to do something about it or if I'm going to go back to septic? Again, all these different scenarios just aren't clear in our, in our thing here. And so just to be very short sighted to say, yeah, there's, there's funds available and it's a short amount of contribution upfront for the city, we're disregarding what the longer-term impacts of this thing are. But, you know, in terms of the homeowner commitment, when we install one of these things on their property, what, what agreements do they make? things on their property, what agreements do they make with the city in terms of their understanding of cost, replacement?
Right, there was a document, I don't know if I sent it to you guys, but there was a document that they executed, and that document that they executed here, I think, I wipe it out and send it to each one of you, I don't, if you know if you have this on.
You sent it to us today?
Yeah, I sent it with the other document, but I don't know if you received it. But the document, well, all of this said that they understood that, you know, this unit will be installed, and they will be paying this monthly, well, fees. They have to give us access to the unit, or give onsite access to the unit, and they hold us homeless, you know, to go to the site. So this is the only document that I found in the file that we had with the homeowners. Nowhere that, to your previous question that you have, because we own the unit, that I see any document that would say after twenty years or thirty years, right, the replacement cost would be the homeowner. That's the only limitation I see. The way I look at it, I couldn't find a document. Since we own, well, the unit, that replacement cost would be asked within twenty to twenty-five years, if something fail of that.
Right, so we're voluntarily, again, maybe not with this specific piece of business, but again, each one of these renewals that we sign, it's a material amount of expansion that we're doing with this program. We're basically saying that we're getting into the business, we have an interest as a city of doing septic sewer or septic replacement, is what we're doing. I mean, we're basically as a city saying that, as part of what we offer as a city, now the preference would be sewer all day long, because we get almost eleven pounds credit for, you know, is that the right terminology?
Yeah, right.
Versus eight. But now we're saying, oh, this is an option that we are wanting to deliver as a city. Is that what we're saying? We had this conversation on Monday, right? That's what we're saying, we don't have any SOPs in order to say, who's doing that? Who's responsible for it? What does that look like? What's, what am I gonna be doing in terms of maintenance and replacement? It just, I just think that this is, we're kind of outkicking our coverage here.
Right, my only answer to that is, I think when the council approved this back in twenty nineteen, right, and the vision was, to my mind, was clear, that they were trying to help the spring, right? Because if you look at the B map document that was prepared by FDP, it stipulated that in the spring area, which is the outline I showed you, that they want, there are two hundred and nine thousand pounds of nitrogen, that they were looking over twenty years, right, that they want to eliminate. The septic tank contribute twenty-nine percent of that. You have fertilizer, organs, and many other stuff have contributed. So basically, maybe that was some of the driven force, that if you cannot really go ahead and put a central system in, this technological system here is giving you better advancement of protecting the groundwater table, right, from the nitrate than a normal septic tank. To give you that in perspective, this is, I'm gonna tell you what I read in the research, right? Basically, if you have a traditional septic tank, right, that only remove thirty or percent, right, of the amount of infant that's coming in terms of the nitrate. If you put in one of these technological system, and there are many out there, this is one of a different kind, this one like a mini water treatment and plan, you have around sixty-five to eighty-five percent treatment, more treatment than what the septic tank give you. So in terms of looking at eight pound per unit, although it is small, you're making, at least, you're getting closer to the contributing to helping, well, the spring and the watershed. And you also, I want to, I just wanted to point out here, we as a city have to provide yearly what we are doing within the watershed to help with the nutrient reduction. We are doing street sweeping, we just placed in Dream Lake, we have placed a special structure there. We are also, if we do some improvement in our wastewater treatment plant that enhanced some treatment, we have to provide all those information as a requirement to FDP to show them that we are working at least to improve the nutrient, you know, help to the watershed. So in this twenty nineteen, I think this was like, maybe, I'm just not here, but I think going forward with this program was a good mindset, because it do help, right, in terms with the nutrient. But your question, but your reason now, you know, about the programming itself, right, is a valid question, right? The valid question to me is, we are the owner of that system. In twenty years or twenty-five years, if something should happen, we are responsible to pay, right, to replace it. Now, to my mind, that was maybe a foresight that was never, you know, evaluated at the time when this program came into place, but that does not mean it could not be fixed, right? If the council, right, you know, instructed us that moving forward, that each one of these homeowner, right, have to really, you know, sign some agreement, well, with us and take ownership of the system if it fails, and they, this are supposed to pay for the cost. But that is something I'm just raising from my part of reading the document. I was here, I was looking at all these documents, and I'm just bringing forward that as a talk of my own.
Right, and again, I don't wanna get into the particulars of the environmental impacts, because I don't think anybody's disputing that. So for us to keep on going back to this talk track around environmental impact, I don't, let's kind of keep that to the side. Again, this is the fourth renewal, seeking the fourth renewal. This renewal specifically, if you round that to four hundred K, that's three percent of the cost it would take to do the entire neighborhood to sewer, based off of the fourteen million dollar kind of projection that we discussed on Monday. How many more renewals are we gonna go through? And how many more of that percentages did it get to a place where you're getting closer to doing it the proper way versus now, again, if we're, if we keep on going down this path, we're basically saying, homeowners with septic tanks, where this is your responsibility, not the city's, we're gonna kind of, we're trying to proliferate this around the entire city to say, we're gonna take ownership of your septic and install these programs and be on full hook for its replacement, for its maintenance, all this stuff. That's, it's more of the financial and, you know, should we be doing it conversation versus the environmental impact, so like, that's...
So let me, let me kind of, kind of get back to the financials as well as, you know, I think when we look at the system, and let's take Deer Lake versus Wakava Glen, okay? Deer Lake, right across the street, just as close to the springs as, it's not, it's in our service area, so we're still responsible for the B map, for Deer Lake. They have smaller lots, the land is more level, so the cost to convert that to sewer is gonna be a lot less than converting Wakava Glen. I don't think that we're doing this as a citywide system, I think we're doing this as a, because this neighborhood has huge lots with very different terrains, it makes sense. Deer Lake, it might not make sense. Another neighborhood, like my mom is on a septic tank, she, they have, they have a sewer line right in front of her house. It would make sense for her not to convert to this, you know, the onsite system, but to put her on sewer. So I don't think we're looking at this as the only solution for our septic tanks. We're looking at just another, you know, error in our quiver for reducing our, the nitrogen and meeting our B map conditions. So I think Wakava Glen is a one-off, there might be other situations where there's not a sewer line in front, it might be three streets over, that might make sense. Another, another one would be Rock Springs Ridge, you know, the front section, you know, phase one has got sewer lines right there. That might make sense not to go to onsite, it might make sense to go to sewer.
A central system.
I think we look at each situation and say, okay, does onsite make sense here? Or can we convert to sewer? This just, this neighborhood lends itself to onsite, because we're getting, I was just doing the calculations, just had to recalculate, we're getting seventy-four percent of the benefit for twenty-two percent of the cost, and that's just our cost versus what Orange County's doing. I'm not saying what Orange County's done is wrong, I'm not saying it's not a part of the solution to help us, help us all with the B map. I'm just saying for this neighborhood, I think that onsite makes the most sense, because of the huge lots and because of the terrain that makes it much more difficult to put sewer in there. The next neighborhood might not make that make sense.
So is this a pilot program that we're dealing with, Wakava Glen? Is it, is it a program that we want to see if it works? And we're doing it with a grant, right?
Well, I mean, it's, it's working, I mean, we know it's working.
Yeah, it's working, but at the beginning of the program back in twenty nineteen, right, it began, started like FDP has, you know, approved the system, they tested for three years, they found out his performance of the system was great, it was better than the traditional sewer system, and they had a grant out there to use the system, and because a miniature water treatment kind of system, and we had used it. And right now, in terms of the record that we are receiving from the two years or two we have, and the program worked, because if the program wouldn't work, FDP wouldn't give us the credit of eight pound.
Yeah, I mean, but Commissioner Blask is a good point. Again, this started out as proof of concept, it's grown a couple times, now we're here. Now it's getting to a point where we're, I think, like, we're many different things. We're looking for a plan, like, is the plan just to limit it to Wakava Glen? Can we answer that question? If we got limitless amount of renewal opportunities, are we limiting this to Wakava Glen?
I would say no, but I would say it would be limited to those situations where sewer, the sewer line is a long way away, you know, so I don't know where that is.
But we own that, that timeline of a long way away. Like, that's, that's the whole point, there's no plan here. Like, we're just in isolation, we're saying, hey, we got another million bucks, do we wanna approve it? Okay, let's throw four hundred thousand, because it's only twenty-five percent of the cost, but yet are we limiting it to Wakava Glen? Are we going to other areas? Like, have you all not modeled out to say, hey, if we had limitless seventy-five percent matching grants by, by this organization, would we do the entire city? Where would we stop? And to continue that further from the financial aspect of it, are we doing straight pass-through? Meaning, the homeowners that benefit from this program are responsible for the entire maintenance cost of this program? Because otherwise, today, the city would have no interest or no financial responsibility to upkeep their septic tanks. So why would we, why would we shift that cost burden to us?
To my knowledge, right, all the maintenance costs for the system going from here going forward, if there's an increase, right, that burden will be borne by the homeowner, the maintenance of that system, right? Remember, we own the system, right? So I'm not getting away from the fact, but the maintenance of that system, right, the way they signed the contract for forty-four dollars, if there's an increase, it is, those fees are already paid to us. If our billing fees goes up, they pay that increase every year. If it perhaps go up more than we thought, right, surely that we, that they will have to pay that cost, we will have to, you know, to come back to you and to explain to you what that does cost and what that increase will be. But to my knowledge, based on what I've read here, that maintenance cost is not a burden to us as a city, that is strictly borne by the homeowner. Now, what I'm telling right now today, if tomorrow the cost increase more, we will have to go back to them, right? We have to come back to you to give us, and go back to them that this is an increase. But every year, there's so much of an increase, but if suppose onsite came back to us and said, okay, that number now is sixty dollars, right, and we vet the number out, and we will have to go back to each one of those onsite unit homeowners, right, and they will have to pay that cost for the maintenance. Right now, there is not something written in stone to really say that, right? It was only from that agreement that I showed you, and I told you when it was written, it said forty-four dollars and fifty cents, right? It did not state clearly in there, if a continuation of an increase, you will have to do it, but we will have to make that clear going, going forward. I just wanna be transparent of what I read and what I'm, you know, so, but to my knowledge here, to tell you now, I do not feel that looking at this program and reading all this document, the intent was for us to pay any part of the money for the maintenance of that, that system, you be the homeowner responsible.
Yeah, and all, and my comments, I mean, the, what we're doing is, well, in effect, create a new business or department within our city utility area. I mean, really, you're not to have a, whenever this master, we're not guaranteed to go on Lake County, it's a five and whatever renewal period is here from a service agreement perspective. So you really have to start planning now for how you're gonna support this, this new department within our city. If, that's what you're, that's where we're going, because again, this is a no end in sight proliferation, because if the money keeps on coming from the seventy-five percent side, you all are gonna keep on coming back to this council, asking for a twenty-five percent match, and there's no, there's no plan in place right now.
I would just like to answer that extension on the seventy-five percent. This is the final extension. There is no more money at St. John's to extend this program beyond this. So for this cost share, for this plan, for this project, this is it.
So this is it? So do we have anything in our ordinances that says, this is gonna be the only pilot program that we are going to have a twenty-five percent share program with a grant? Because then other communities that have septic tanks are gonna come to us and say, well, wait a minute, you, you did this for Wakava Glen, what are you doing for us?
Correct, and we're still building that, because that plan is not gonna work.
We have nothing to say that we are not going to extend this program beyond the pilot program. Do we have anything in writing with that?
No.
Well, neither does Orange County to, for state or state funding either. I mean, nobody has, legislature works on a yearly by year basis, there's no, no guarantee that D E P's gonna have money, or the St. John's Water Management's gonna have money for any septic to sewer, any septic to onsite, any, you know, they could, and they probably will, but there's no guarantee of anything.
So how are we going to address the next community that's gonna come to us and say, you did Wakava Glen, what are you gonna do for us?
It's the closest to the springs, it's the one that matters the most to, to everybody. I mean...
People are gonna talk about their own bills, they're not gonna talk about...
Not gonna worry about somebody else's.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
They're not gonna worry about somebody else's bills, but...
Not exactly the point, people from a different neighborhood are gonna say, hey, well, I want the same, I don't wanna make a capital expenditure of whatever it costs to replace a septic system of thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars to adhere to state statutes now. They're gonna say, well, where's the four thousand install? And you're on the hook for maintenance? Okay, great, I just have to pay forty dollars a month, five percent escalator every year, but, I mean, again, it's just not, it's just not fully thought out, in my opinion.
Right, and that's the reason I brought it, you know, it's up to the council, right, to advise us how to proceed, right? All the, all the question that you raised, Commissioner Blask, rest, right?
And we have representation from onsite in the room tonight, do we not?
I think, I think we have a representative, right? We do have a representative.
But here, here's another question, what benefit, how would we, so play this one out, so we've got our master services agreement, and we would get on Lake County's, they have a longer hook for onsite to be the one responsible for the maintenance?
Now, here's the reason why we are. When onsite was selected by the city of a pocket, they were selected as a sole source. That sole source, remember, come back to the board every time for renewal, right? Their contract, their master agreement is the master agreement, half twenty twenty-six, I think, or twenty twenty-five, right, in there. But the sole source, right, that was, that's how they will work as a sole source. I, because there's a piggyback contract available right now from Lake County, right? I was, we were going to piggyback on that contract, right, on their, their contract, rather than come back to make a defense for a sole source to get onsite to continue this program with us. Because right now, that sole source expired.
But, but assuming the council said, yeah, we wanna do that, we would automatically qualify and then get on to that same contract term schedule?
Right, that's correct, that's correct, that's how the piggyback contract work, we will review it. Well, we have to talk to them and work with them, true, it's a system we have to work through.
That's my point, right? Just because we say, hey, we're gonna jump on this piggyback, that doesn't mean onsite has to honor, I'm assuming we would re-legislate or renegotiate contracts.
I agree, I agree, but I think, you know, having ninety more units to be installed using the technological advanced system, you know, I can't speak for them, but I would think it is hard for, if I were in the issue, to say no to this. But again... But again, it's something that we will have to work through with them and the procurement with the department and with the piggyback of that contract.
Get on this end of the room, Commissioner Smith.
What part of the system does Onsite own?
Well, the, the entire system there, all the instrumentation and the boxes. This is what their patent is, right? But by the permit and we asked them to install the system, we are the owner of that system. But they're the one who developed that whole treatment system, right? They were the one that developed the treatment system. We then asked them to install it as a part of this, this, this program. And because of the permit, we own that system. So the boxes, the instrument and everything there. What they have as a right, they are proprietary in terms of the, I think, the, the way how the system work as a miniature system. They do have a SCADA system with it. I think the programming of those things, they're the one who, who, who I think own, own that right, the proprietary right. But I can, you know, there's somebody out and see if you want to say something on that.
Because I ask, because in the master agreement, it says it referenced onsite property.
Well, he's expert, I think it's Scott, so if you can answer this. I think he gave the presentation it previously.
Scott Forster with Onsite Performance. So when the master services agreement references onsite property, it is talking about our proprietary software. So all the treatment components and hardware, the controller, the data link, everything that sends treatment processes up into the ether of the ethernet, that's all owned by the city. And we sell that to you and the scheduled payment is in Exhibit A, not the master services agreement, but Exhibit A. And when you buy that, as long as we have a service agreement with you, we maintain the software in the unit and everything therein. It's a complete turnkey package. And the proprietary piece, the software, it's software as a service. So in the event that we go away or that you want to choose a different vendor to operate and maintain these, we could license that software to that vendor. And these are, you know, municipal wastewater treatment processes. We use Class A operators that we hire here in the state. So there's nothing really that complex about the treatment. We just have the, the software piece. That's our proprietary.
Sorry, we're hamstrung. We don't have exhibits on the contract. All we have is the primary MSA. We don't have the exhibits, so.
Got you, we can send that over.
That would probably help clarify some things.
Well, since you're there, the question was asked in reference to, what would you repair? Can you answer that question as well in reference to?
Yes, sir. We repair everything in that unit under our current DWTS service order. So we have an O and M agreement and that O and M agreement includes our software agreement. So in our current master service agreement framework, there is the opportunity for our client to purchase just our software and then have a third-party operation company step in, of which there are dozens across the state, and provide the physical treatment process operation. And then we would have a license with them to provide them the software to access the units. But we, we repair everything right now. Our guys are out in Wakava Glen weekly.
One of the questions was that, would you accept us if we did piggyback off the Lake County?
We would absolutely discuss. I got, I can't authorize that just straight up.
Discuss it.
My leadership, but.
He's not saying approve it, he's saying discuss it. Right? I mean, but it's important, right?
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree.
I, I've, I've had many regrets up here believing promises made, not, not by you, but just in general.
Yeah, we, we would enter into contract negotiations off that Lake County contract. And I think the, I'm not an attorney, so I'm going to stop talking.
Well, if it's, if it's a piggyback, there's no negotiation. It's, it's the contract.
That, that's right.
Isn't that right, Mr. Shepherd?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Nesta, you got?
You got to want to belabor the point by any means. And I had a lot of questions at the first meeting that I do appreciate staff coming back. And sorry for the, how long, you know, we, we've been discussing this topic. I, I want to echo a lot of the sentiments that the commissioners have already stated. There's just a lot of unknowns. And I don't think this is, I don't want to have this reflect negatively on onsite. This isn't, it's just on a lot of unknowns that we have moving forward. And it, it's that timeline of 20, 30, 40 years from now, what does that look like? And then again, I always think about worst case scenario, what happens if the system fails? Things back up into a homeowner's house? Who's responsible for flooring, tubs, tile, et cetera? What does that look like? Are we going to then be litigated by homeowners? What does that look like? There's so many unknowns on this one that I, I'm just not super comfortable with it. And another thing on the, to, to reference the, the Lake County agreement too, they have a provision in there that has a termination clause, basically, either the county or onsite can cancel within 10 calendar days and be done in that. We don't have any power of that. So if that's canceled and Lake County doesn't, maybe there's an issue, I'm not saying there will be, but then that leaves us in a, in a precarious situation of how do we, do we have the staff that's going to work on this? Do they want to work on it? Again, what is our liability and cost moving forward? And I feel that staff already has a lot to do and this may add a, another layer of complexity that we are not prepared for right now. So that's it on my comments. I, I just think right now this isn't our best option.
Did we ever find out? Remember I had asked you the question that I had gotten a phone call that onsite was bought out by another affiliated company? Was onsite bought out by anyone?
Yes, Commissioner. So we were acquired by a infrastructure investment fund and capitalized earlier this year. It's a pretty large investment fund. They just bought H2O Innovations as well. So they've got a pretty wide, diverse portfolio of water and wastewater service companies.
So my, and my next comment is, here we have an opportunity to get 75% of the cost covered by St. John Waters Management District. If we do not accept that 75% to help reduce the nitrogen influx and we do nothing, then what is our liability as a city?
Nothing. Well, the money goes back to the Water Management District and they can appropriate it to another city or county who want to use it.
But then how we're going to solve the problem that they say currently exists with existing septic tanks?
Well, I think the council will have to appropriate money to do an infrastructure to put in a central sewer system, if that's the wish of the council.
At a cost of?
Well, for this one, for 191 parcel in that subdivision, it would cause you 14.3 million with this current cost.
And that, that's based on 75,000.
75,000. We don't know what the cost would be going up, right?
It's north of 50.
Keep in mind, Orange County got, I think, something like 120 million in, in funds through grants and things like that. So there's other funds available as well.
No, no, they.
There's no funds available. Absolutely not.
Orange County got 20, they got 40% FDEP contribute, 40% of the cost of all their projects. St. John's contributed 25%. The resident contributed 10% and Orange County contributed 25%. So that's 25% of the last one they just did was $75,000 per parcel. So the county put out 18,750 dollars per house. Where we're asking for the 90 units, we're put out 4,125 dollars to get 74% of the benefit.
But what does it cost us long-term? That's, that's the, that's the answer we don't have.
Well, you've still got lift stations. You still have got sewer pipes that we won't have to maintain if we've got onsite. I'm not saying it's, it's probably not apples to apples, but it's, it's apples to pears. And so it's not just a, there's no cost associated with sewer and there's all these costs associated with onsite. It, it's, you know, we're getting, as I say, 74% of the benefit for 22% of the cost and the homeowner has no upfront cost. And they're paying their way with, they pay the operating cost with their, their, their monthly charge, but.
So, so if we did this and assuming that these are going to work for the next 20 years until the contract, at least that would give us the 20 years to come up with the 14 million. Well, by then it's part of the 20.
Exactly, exactly. This can be a shot, at least you can put this in and it'll give you some benefit. And if you want to change that system out to a central sewer system, you have time in order to go ahead and appropriate fund to do that. Because it would take you four years to construct any central sewer system in the design, construction, everything else to put a, put a system like that in place.
Can, can we do this? I mean, instead of killing this and making a decision tonight, again, why, why would you not just, knowing that you're going to have, what was this, 90 plus? What's in the system right now?
30.
30?
30 installed.
30 installed, right? Now we have 30 installed in Wakava Glen.
So 120.
And this will give us another 90 more.
Okay, so 120.
Right.
Why would you not come up with a policy around the 120 that are going to be potentially installed? Give us comfort that the city is not going to lose money from other people that aren't benefiting from the service? The people that are benefiting from it are the ones paying for it. Maintenance cost is covered by the homeowners that are actually using the product. Because I, some sort of mechanism there to say, hey, there's an assurance here that, you know, we're, we're expending 400K for 90 units. That's a material chunk of money for the city to put upfront, even though 75% of it's being paid elsewhere. I get it. So there's benefit to those homeowners. Now, on the flip turn is, hey, they don't have to do an expensive septic repair, but they're also going to be on the hook for all maintenance and replacement of these units. Have some sort of policy in place from the city that gives us comfort because it's the financial aspect that I'm getting hung up on and the uncertainty there. So that way it gives us assurances after the master service agreement is over, then the people that are benefiting from it the most, those homeowners, then incur that expense. Now, it's going to be a tough conversation with them when you're telling them that, hey, guaranteed, it's going to raise 5% every, every year.
Right, they have to sign, sign some document in order to proceed with that because existing document is not very clear on, on that.
But what are we going up on wastewater? We, we've got at least, is it three years of 6%?
Right.
Where does that end? I mean, I don't, I guess it's a.
I mean, we've sat in these chambers and I, I mean, we don't have to go far with a clear lake, you know? Talking about responsibilities, accountabilities of what the city's burden is. This is a prime example. It seems like you're flipping course here. Right now, we have zero accountability for septic systems on people's private property.
No, we, we already have responsibility. We got, we have to meet the BMAP, but this.
The homeowners have that responsibility to make sure that their systems are.
No.
Are up to snuff.
No, we have the BMAP responsibility. They have no responsibility.
Okay, so play, play that one out. Throw onsite systems out of the window.
Yes.
Okay, we get an email or a communication from the organization that monitors that. And it's saying Wakava Glen is, is contributing to this.
It, it won't be Wakava Glen, it will be the City of Apokka.
In this case, Wakava Glen.
No, no, it's not, it's not Wakava Glen.
If you're not willing to kind of go through the exercise with me, but.
It's not. I'm just telling you, BMAP is our, the whole city.
Right, it's its whole areas, it's a holistic version.
Okay, so the entire city, how are you leaning into Wakava Glen to know that that's the place to go?
Because it's the closest.
It's the closest to the spring. That's the only reason.
Okay, okay.
That's the only reason why you choose, it's the closest to the spring.
There's my finger in there. Come on.
Let me answer that scientifically.
Yeah.
So Wakava Glen, due to its location proximity to the springs, has the highest recharge rate from groundwater to the spring shed. It's the most permeable soil in the area. So if there is an issue with the BMAP, what they're looking at, what BMAP's looking at from our data and from the spring shed is to see if what we've installed has actually caused a drop in the numbers that they measure every month. That's how part of this credit is determined, is you've put these in, we've seen this go down. We're, we're correlating X to Y, this is caused by this. That's what they're looking at. That's how they're calculating it.
And, and we, by the new, the new wastewater treatment plant, which we're now below three milligrams per liter, we're already covered for at least the next 10 years based on our wastewater treatment plant, the reduction we've had in.
Partially.
Yeah.
So.
But, but it's, at year 15, we're going to probably start to have to look, we're going to have to look for other solutions to reduce the nitrogen going into the groundwater.
We already are.
Yes.
We're.
So this.
We're starting to build that plan. That's the identification of the septic tanks and how we're going to move out and how we're going to pick which neighborhoods need to go on sewer and which neighborhoods need to be nutrient removal. We're still building that. Everybody in the state of Florida is still building that. This is not just the City of Apokka that's facing this. Everybody's facing it. Everybody's plans are due beginning of February for the preliminary plan with our finalized plans due in August. We're still building it. That's why I can't give you answers that I don't have yet because I don't know what it's going to look like for Rock Springs or out near Zellwood or off Golden Jet. We don't know yet. We're still trying to figure it out.
I mean, we've stopped the bleeding because we don't, we have no other new neighborhoods that are, we're putting in septic tanks. So the, the bleeding has stopped, but they're, they're not going to be satisfied with just stopping the bleeding. At some point, we've got to move in the, in the direction of reducing what we've already putting into the groundwater.
The new regulations that came out in July, again, it's all new builds, one acre or less have to have a nutrient removal tank if you are not within location to a city sewer. Starting in 2025, it's going to be all replacements. I've already spoken to the BMAP group. That is what is coming out in the next round of BMAP updates. Anybody's tank who fails has to put in some sort of nutrient removal or connect to a central sewer system. That's going to be the law. It's not official yet, but it's going to be.
But you take, you take, so we've got, you know, Orange County's done the same thing we've done. You pick the, the neighborhoods closest to the springs. So they're looking at the Palms, they looked at Sweetwater West and all those. But they're still putting in septic tanks that are not monitored right up here, you know, near our, you know, right on, on Cleveland. So, so, you know, we're, we're trying to make our first step, which is to get, as I go back to, 74% of the benefit for 22% of the cost to the city.
But, but I'm, all I'm asking staff to do is operationalize what you're wanting to do with these 120 thing program. You're pushing back to say, well, wastewater, it just, I, I don't understand why there's friction there. It seems like a logical, practical kind of point of view to have, right? We're making a decision to, again, you're focusing just on the upfront capital cost. You're not looking at over the total cost of ownership or talk, well, ownership really, because we own it. All I'm saying is have a policy in your, your operating procedures to say, how are we handling this? How are we ensuring that it's paid for by whomever? But hey, I'm just one of five up here. I, I get it. I'm, I'm talking too much, so I'll yield.
Great point, great point. If I may, can we go to a public comment and not labor this anymore and get your vote?
Well, let me make one other comment. It's also my understanding if a individual homeowner puts in one of these units, the city does not get credit for them. Is that correct?
If they put in a unit on their own that is a nutrient removal system, currently the way the setup works, outside of going to onsite, which has to have a DEP permit, which has to be connected to a municipality, a traditional nutrient removal system goes through DOH. Right now, DOH is not communicating with the municipalities to say, you've had 75 homeowners in your service area that have put in a nutrient removal unit. We don't get that information. There is no back and forth that has not been built yet. And that's on DOH, not on us because I've called and asked repeatedly. So they haven't built that system yet to say when, when these are being put in to notify us of that. So I can include it in the BMAP that these have been installed when we report.
So when a private homeowner replaces their septic tank, are they required to get permits or anything like that?
They are for both a traditional and a nutrient removal. All of that is permitted through DOH. Um, it's.
Do they have to come into the City of Apokka to get a permit if they're switching out their septic tank?
No, that is all through Orange County DOH.
Okay.
We don't have anything for that.
And we don't get notified by Orange County that a private homeowner in the confines of the city.
Which is in our BMAP, yeah.
Has put in a nutrient tank or a traditional, which they are still allowed to do right now for a replacement.
So there's three or four. The one we had, the open house at, that Habitat for Humanity, they put in a system that doesn't help us. And yet they're in our BMAP. Yeah, they're in our BMAP and yet we get no credit because it's not a, it's not a independent wastewater system that we can monitor, so. So, but that's the county. Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this? Sure, come on down.
Yeah, thanks again for even considering this. Our entire business model is predicated on long-term operational contracts with our customers. And the units are pass-through. The OpEx is a pass-through. So we make a profit on the thirty-seven, thirty-eight, whatever we're charging now. And the units pay for themselves as we maintain and operate them out of our charge. And, yeah, that's pretty much it.
All right. Good enough. Is that it? Okay, well, we'll close the public hearing and look for some direction.
What I think would be advantageous is, I know you don't want to hear this, but to table it for now, let's get, let's work really a little bit more with staff to get a policy in place of how this works with homeowners, see if homeowners will be agreeable to that and move forward from there on what that looks like long-term for us.
So is there a deadline on accepting this money? No. No, okay.
I mean, I'm sure they're...
Yeah, in order to get a system in. But we already kind of signed the agreement. This money is already allocated to us, right? But if we haven't started to use it or we're not doing anything else, we have to tell them and they will reallocate the funding.
So we've got time, is what I'm hearing.
No, we have time. And the dates here are up to 2025 to get the system in the ground, right? So we have at least. Yeah, March twenty-five.
March what now?
March twenty-twenty-five. To get this ninety units in the ground and to utilize all the funding that they provide to us.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to, like I said, I don't want to kill the idea of doing this thing. I just want it to be very crystal clear about, once these things are in the ground, and if this is the final one hundred and twenty, you know, similar to how, like, if someone were to come up to me on the street and say, hey, how's wastewater? How am I billed for that? Or what happens if, you know, sometimes with the pipe from wherever to wherever? You know, I have a general idea and comfort level to say, okay, here's what it is. Here's how we look at our rates. We do studies every once in a while. This is how we do, you know, rate increases, et cetera. Having something similar for this program specifically is where I need to get to a comfort spot to say, both from a city perspective and a homeowner that's getting the benefit of this, how do we position it to them to say, hey, well, it could go up five percent? Well, yeah, only if this, these things happen. Yeah. I don't know how to articulate myself very well on that one.
Good. All right, so this, we have a motion. Commissioner Nesta, do you want to bring it back? You want to, two weeks, four weeks? Or I guess you want to wait till the first of the year then? First meeting in January? Is that...
I think that would make sense.
Okay.
Well, are you able to do, like, I'm just asking for that. Is that something that you're able to do?
It will take us some time to, you know, to develop this policy. We have to talk to the attorney to look at documents. We have to review the old document and what to recommend going forwards. So we take a certain time, so the beginning of the new year.
I just, I kind of agree. I feel a policy will help us. And just to make a decision, because we're working without a policy. We're working without a plan. We're just saying, this works, and then we'll figure it out down the road. And again, I don't want to bring up Clear Lake Estates, but, you know, initially, we were, we were willing to go in, remember, two hundred thousand, which we did. We got talked into it, and then they did it. And then we couldn't do the six hundred thousand because DEP said no. So...
Well, that's not, it's not over yet. We had just some stumbles along the ways. But Clear Lake is not a great example, but...
But anyway, just...
So got a motion...
Put a policy together.
Yeah. Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta to, to...
Table.
Table the IDWTS conversion program amendment for cost share to the January fourth meeting. Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Taken by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand twenty-five. Susan?
Ordinance number three thousand twenty-five. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from rural settlement to mixed use for a portion of certain real property generally located east of Golden Gem Road, west of State Road four twenty-nine, and south of Isle Royale Place, owned by Albert McKimmy, Susan Acastecio, and Christopher Crosby Johnson, comprising twenty acres more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Any changes, Gene? Okay, anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number two, three thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand twenty-six.
Ordinance number three thousand twenty-six. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from CC, community commercial, to CR, regional commercial, for certain real property generally located at twenty-three oh one Coral Hills Road, owned by HCH Development LLC, comprising six point three eight six acres more or less, providing for severability, complex, and an effective date.
Any changes?
No changes.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand twenty-six.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Why don't we jump ahead and let's go to the city attorney report? Get that one, if you're ready, Cliff?
Yes, sir. Okay. As you know, this was an item, this is the item of the crossroads at Kelly Park. I'm going to call it a security agreement. They've titled it land development work assurance and grant of lien. The initial agreement called for us to have a secured position on a piece of property. But that property was already in a CDD and was about to go out to bonding, which means that our position as security for building of the roads and infrastructure would have been subordinate to the CDD because those are the bondholders. And so that would have put us at a position that was not really secure as opposed to going out to the traditional bond, payment performance bond. Your code does allow for the opportunity to enter into agreement with a developer, the county, whatever you need to, if that's what you choose, but you're not required to do that. I met with Mr. Galvin, I met with Ms. Richmond, and this was discussed at some length. And I think recently you had some discussions. And this whole issue of not being in first position came up. Since that time, actually, after a lot of work yesterday and then today, the developer, Mr. Calvin, who's here and will address the issue if you would like to ask me questions, submitted a second agreement. And this one, which I have provided to you earlier today, actually is two different agreements because it covers different properties, puts us in a first or priority position. I highlighted that portion of the agreements for you. Be happy to answer questions for you about that. And includes, I think, three different parcels, one of which would be second position. But the ones we are on first position on are worth significantly more than the cost that's estimated to complete. If you've left agreements, you see that they include a lien amount, meaning once these agreements are signed, if you agree to them, they are recorded and become immediately a lien on this free and clear property, which I sent you the title reports for. They were expedited and received today for that six million amount. But also, if it was, if we had to come in and take it over and the cost to complete exceeded that six million dollar number, the lien would automatically go up to adjust to that price. And so it's as secure as you can get for this kind of an agreement. You do not have to do it. Obviously, this is discretionary. If you prefer the contractor or the developer to go get a bond, and that's what he has said he would absolutely do. The incentive, if you want to consider it, and I noticed Ms. Richmond's not here, but it's my understanding that the reason why this would be something for us to consider is because per our agreements or our code, Mr. Galvin's company would be entitled to some impact fee credits based on the cost of construction. And part of that would include the cost of him going out and securing the bond that we would ask. By this agreement, I am told, we would save up to eight hundred thousand dollars in those costs of impact fee credits. I can't verify that. I'm not the finance person, but that's what I was told. So that's why this is here. Obviously, this is not a recommendation from your lawyer who doesn't do those things unless it's to keep you out of trouble. This is an opportunity. So that's where I am, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions, any questions for Cliff?
I don't know if it's for Cliff or for Mr. Galvin. Are you just able to articulate the parcels that we are now going to be encumbering? Correct.
Yes, my name's Mike Galvin. I reside at one thirty-four Brightwaters Boulevard, St. Petersburg, Florida. Thank you this evening. And Commissioner Nesta, the two parcels we're pledging, we purchased a total of about one thousand three hundred and fifty units, and it's in multiple phases. We've recently have a phase four, which is our, which consists of our phase four of our master plan and also the commercial parcel of the future, which does not consist of any CDD encumbrances.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for...
I would add that if you all agree that the developer has already signed the two agreements, the draft of which you've seen, so it'd simply be able to present it to the council and have them sign off on and send to recording.
And is it, and this is for Mr. Shepherd, for notification purposes, even though we're kind of editing what was noticed?
Well, first, that's, it's a sunshine question. And I know it seemed odd, but it is a fact that you don't even have to have an agenda, legally speaking. I understand your practice, and this is an unusual situation, but it's because of not wanting the opportunity, if in fact it's what I've been told it is, to save that eight hundred thousand dollars to go by without at least giving you opportunity to weigh in.
Okay, I just want to make sure that...
Yeah, you're not required to have an agenda. You're required to have notice, minutes, and the opportunity of the public to be heard, and you've met all those requirements.
And I would agree, if we hadn't already had that they were pledging property, it's just they're pledging different property.
Correct.
Free and clear.
It's not free and clear property.
So it's, the agreement's the same, just the piece of property they're pledging is different.
I understand.
So I think that that's how I felt comfortable not putting it off until, you know, December, so.
And I apologize. That was my question. When I read the agreement, it just, I just didn't feel comfortable.
Yep.
So I appreciate your offer and what you're doing in lieu of what you proposed. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant or, and I guess not applicant, or Mr. Shepherd? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve the amended what? Cliff, how would we, how would you word that one?
Yeah, the, to approve the agreement for land development work assurance and grant of lien for phases, Kelly Park phases one dash two, one dash three and two, and phase one B. It's two separate agreements. Those are the properties. And it also includes the claim of lien, which would be effective as soon as these are recorded.
Okay.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, council reports. Commissioner Nesta, you want to start us out?
We didn't do CRA? We didn't do this, aren't we supposed to discuss CRA? Or do we remove that?
Yeah, that's removed.
Okay, sorry. My mistake.
The next meeting.
Got you.
Yep.
Sure, so wanted to remind everyone, there is a turkey trot going on this Saturday. It's a five and ten K. So out at the amphitheater, I think it'll be fun and a good community event. So head on out there if you can. Wanted to discuss the real estate policy that we discussed last meeting. I was expecting it on this agenda. Just asking why it's not here. This isn't a, it's not an attorney shepherd. I would think it's a more administrative side.
What was that?
I can tell you that I've looked at the ordinance. There were some discussion, we've chatted some emails. I checked the agenda to see if it was on it because I was trying to see if I needed to meet for this agenda, and it wasn't. There is an ordinance been drafted. It's got a number, I think it's thirty thirty, if I'm not mistaken. And there was some discussion about, okay, where would we stick it in our current code? And I landed on finance, but we don't have a really perfect spot for it. But I would expect, unless the manager, who's not here for me to ask, would have it on the next agenda, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's really key. And we discussed having it on this one, that we focus on that because obviously we have a lot of real estate that's changing hands right now. So, or at least working to. So I'd like to have something in place before we make final decisions. Also, the Forest Avenue property that we discussed, I was expecting that on this agenda too, Mr. Hit. Are we, can we have it on the next agenda? Or what's the expectations there? What changed?
I've got the parcel number and the acreage and the square footage of the building itself. I've got to get with the city attorney and get the same jargon put together for the CRA for disposal.
Okay. Hoping that's on the next agenda, similar to the RE, the real estate policy as well. I don't see why we need to delay that at all. And I think the more we delay a lot of these, I mean, it's, we're not having a second meeting in December, and we're pushing a lot of stuff off into January now. So I think it's important, so thank you. Need an update on the cemetery, the Bay Ridge Cemetery? Is there any update on that? What are we doing with that? Is there negotiations with the owner? Cleanup, et cetera?
I have, and no, I do not have. So no, I guess we can...
The only one that would probably give us an update would be Radley, Mr. Radley. The only one that would probably give us an update would be Radley, Mr. Radley, and he's, he's, he's not here.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Okay, Bay Ridge Cemetery, okay.
That's the Bay Ridge Cemetery, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Have a good Thanksgiving, everyone.
Mr. Smith?
My simple, we had a great Veterans Day celebration. Happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, so in preparation, because I know that the December, the second December meeting got canceled, what, what are we looking like for the charter review come January, the first meeting in January?
As far as I know, we'll be ready to go. I mean, I've got what I need to do done, so I'm ready to provide it if you guys want it, whatever you guys tell, tell me to do, but I'm ready to go.
So how, how would that work? Would that be in the, in the, an item on the agenda for that?
Should be, well, I don't know, did y'all adopt a schedule for meeting? Because that's the only thing, is when you're going to meet? Is it going to be separate from your council meetings or an adjunct, like you're going to do the count, the, the charter review before or after? That's the part I don't know about the scheduling, but in terms of the materials, it's basically, here's the breakdown, we're going to do articles one and two, then three and four and so forth, and here's, and once I have the schedule, then prior to the meeting, I provide you a memo of what I see, and then you have time to go over it and tell me at that meeting or even before, if you want, to look at whatever else, and then we come to the table, we talk about it, we work our way through it. When we get through those sections, we have the next meeting and go through it. And if there's something that has to be drafted in between, per your request, and it's drafted and brought to you.
So do you think it's best to have it before the city council meetings or?
My honest opinion, it's better to have it as a separate meeting altogether.
Yeah, I think it should be like a workshop type setup separately.
That's what I prefer.
So we're not rushing or anything.
But again, I don't do your scheduling, so I don't know whether that's between you and Ms. Bone or you and Chuck, or I, I don't know who does that part, but that's what needs to happen next.
If we agree on dates, can everyone show up on those dates?
Sure. Do you want to do them all night meetings? You want to do them just three consecutive?
Well, if that's the case, we could do it just like a bunch of workshops, just do three or four days.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
I would only ask for some time in between so that you give me some work to do with, to, to look, oh, I need to look at this, or can you check out this kind of a thing? Or what cities are doing it this way? Go find me some example, I can do it.
Yeah, I think it makes a little more sense to space it out, and it gives residents the opportunity to kind of do some research as well, kind of provide feedback. I don't want to rush through it by any means.
So, but, all right, so then at the next meeting, can we come up with some dates?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I would say, if you want to do it as a workshop, I'd say start it, do it, if, if, if we don't want to do it concurrent meetings, I would say do it at six o'clock, the next three night meetings, start it, I mean, January, February, March, the night meetings, but.
No.
Yeah, I don't want to time limit on it, because it's going to be a lot of discussion.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I would.
We're not going to leave it open-ended either.
Yeah, I just, I mean, look at these council meetings, I mean, we really, it gets too long and, and.
Well, it, it, I will say, from where I sit, it's hard to predict what's going to take long, what's not, because I don't know what, what the hot buttons are, and that may be true, find out to be true when I start going through your charter. I know what I see, but I don't know what you all see. But I can tell you that from my experience in doing this, it's better when the only thing you're working on for that particular meeting is the charter, and you start with, okay, we're going to start at six and finish at eight, we're going to start at five and end at seven, or whatever, you set a defined time period and you work your way through it, because that encourages you to stake, stick to the task at hand. And in that situation, if there, I'm, I'm making stuff up here based on prior experience, but if you said, hey, should we have something in our charter about how we can clean up water in Apopka? Okay, maybe, maybe not, I can give you some information. Or is there a better way to, should we have a different form of government? That's going to require some discussion and some, here's the information that's out there on all the various forms of government. But I won't know that until you tell me that's what you're interested in, because from my perspective, I will not say, you should change it from a government. That's not for me to say, yours, for you to tell me what you want to do.
Okay.
So, yeah, if we can, us all take homework assignment away to come up with whatever our comfortable cadence of those meetings look like, bringing back the next meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Get that. Then, of course, you know, Ms. Patton, or Dr. Patton, you had sent a note about economic development positions. Are those, are those new positions? Okay, those are new.
Those are new applicants.
Okay. But my assumption is that everybody would see it, right? You're not like looking at me to be like the sole source of, of feedback, correct?
I, I sent it to you because you requested it.
Okay.
My understatement.
Got it, got it, got it, okay. But you all are doing your own assessment internally, you're not, like, my, my opinions don't like impact what you all are doing, right? Got it. And then the last thing, and Commissioner Smith touched on it, it was a great Veterans Day event. I just wanted to give praise to the fire department personnel and the police department personnel who responded to that horrific motorcycle accident that was right there, right to the, prior to the start of that event. The injuries were pretty traumatic, and I don't know how you all see that on a day-to-day basis, but, you know, thank you for providing that support and care, and hopefully the, the people that were impacted by that are, are on their way to mending, but that was a pretty, pretty tragic accident to start the day that day, so kudos to your teams.
Commissioner Velasquez?
Same thing, I mean, Veterans Day was, was not a surprise, but certainly it, it started out with the accident and, and thankfully, we had so much, we had personnel at the park and they were able to respond quickly. And just kudos to the fire department, and that was basically it. Yesterday, we were here, we swore in two police officers. So I'm happy to see that our police department is growing slowly, but we are getting good candidates. And we, of course, I'll let the mayor kind of highlight the state of the city speech that's coming up very soon. And, oh, and for everyone who's still here, happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Last but not least, CRA meeting will be December sixth at one o'clock, so that will just, the changes we made to the, the document, had to do some additional changes, so that'll be.
And that's it? Let me see, would you say December sixth?
Here, one o'clock, December sixth. So right before the meeting, it's just one item, just a change, but we've got to, got